Call a regular board education meeting or please stand in question.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll bubble card.
Ms. Betterbit, here. Mr. Case Liao.
Here.
Ms. Lynn, here. Mr. Rikowski.
Here.
Ms. Stadler.
Excused.
Mr. Sang.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here.
Ms. Hewer, here. Mr. White.
Here.
Fire exits, Matt?
Emergency exits are at the back of the LGI.
All right, we have two workshops tonight. The first workshop is going to be Mr. Brian Archer on Sergeant.
Just a quick little preamble to this. Over the course of the next few meetings, we're going to have all principals and department heads give a representation of initiatives they're working on this year with their staff, goals they have, update you all on work that's happening in the building. Everyone will be invited back during budget season between, you know, January and March to do that part of the work. So tonight is more focused on things that they're working on for this year. And like I said, the next few board meetings, we'll have the rest of our principals and department heads. So Brian, thanks for being our very first.
I'm the first.
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for giving Sergeant the chance to talk about where we ended up with our lab plan from last year. And if you recall, our building was cited by the state for performance in math by our students with disabilities and our economically disadvantaged subgroups. And a lot of the students overlap with both of those groups. And I mean, I suppose if I could just finish just by saying, we established a basic goal of having our subgroups increase their performance on the state test by five percent. And overall, for ELA in math, it's, you know, it's a handwritten thing, but we improved in every single subgroup in the building for ELA in math. So we, you know, our building, our teachers, our TAs, our kids, our parents, everybody did a lot of work to get everything moving in the same direction in terms of testing. And, you know, testing's not the end all be all, but we did do a lot of work and paid a lot of attention to working in areas of improving reading and math literacy and so forth. And if you could just take a quick look. Anyway, the work we did, we had, we created a math vision for our building, which I'll share at the end of the last slide. We created a data team for our building. And we used our progress monitoring data to really pinpoint kids who were struggling in ELA in math. And then we talked about interventions for kids at the classroom level. And then our data team met with grade level teachers twice from January to June of last year. And I will say, not every teacher is comfortable having their data out there for us to take a look at. But the second meeting we had, it was much more comfortable. And we really did pinpoint areas of need and areas of improvement. I, the data shows it was a very worthwhile endeavor. Our data team consisted, and still consists of four staff, myself. And we don't have the staff developer this year like we had last year because we're, we're not a lab school at this point. So that was a very good plan that we conducted and completed. Just to go through some of the overview data of the things we were cited for for the subgroups. In 2017, all of our students, the areas where our kids did better were, again, across the board. But the statistical improvement from 2017 to 2018, for all students achieving a level three and four in the state tests for math, was a thirty, thirty-eight percent of our student body. Then last year, it was forty-eight percent of our student body. ELA, 2017 was thirty percent, 2018 was forty-three percent. Our students with disabilities, again, we had a nine percent increase from level threes and fours from one year to the other. ELA, again, we had a nice bump, seven percent increase. And our economically disadvantaged was an even bigger increase from twenty percent to thirty-one percent in math and fifteen to twenty-seven percent in ELA.
Do you have a question on those? If you wouldn't mind? So really what the percentages are, are the percentage of the total students in the, whatever the sample, the group is, that achieved a level three or four?
Correct.
So the levels go one, two, three, four, or?
Correct.
One, two, three, four?
Yeah.
Is there a, so I know for last year, you wanted to show an increase, which you did. And then I think you're going to share with us at the end, you know, your vision and hopefully you'll also have with it how you know or your actual plan of how to get there. I guess the reason I bring that up is I know with Jonathan and the work we're doing, it's, it seems like it'll fit right in with what you're saying is we're, we need to teach them this, but there's different ways of going about it. So hopefully that'll provide maybe some, you know, different methodologies and not just the vision or a goal, I want to get to here, but how are we actually going to do that?
Yeah, well, again, the testing results are, it's one piece of data. I didn't bring our, like, our behavioral data, but, you know, every year of the past five years, the, you know, our students are in class more, they're engaged more in class because they're behaving better. But that's also because the teachers are engaging the kids in better, better ways every year. Some of the goals we have for this year, we want, and we are recycling in our cafeteria. And again, what I envision for the building is really to increase and embed our, our building's data team and the processes that are in place, you know, to continue that work and to carry that success forward. We want to build on Dr. Landau's vision regarding equity and building leadership. And I think part of your question, when we talk about the equity, we're really talking about how to engage the kids differently so every, every student has, has a great education. Our equity team goal is we look for school opportunities, activities that are inclusive and accessible for all students, which allow for deeper thinking and understanding of their ever increasingly complex world. And we're planning to create a building leadership team this year as well. Some of the activi-
Another question is for clarity, because on that slide, it talks about 2017 to 2018 Sergeant goals. So are those, are you reiterating the goals from last year or are you?
I gave you, he made a mistake with the date on the PowerPoint.
Okay.
I think this one you're showing have this year's date. Is that, Brian, you made a revision? I gave the board the PowerPoint that you sent me last week.
Yeah.
Right.
There we go, okay. I'll look up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are, yeah, I corrected this.
Yeah, I didn't notice it before I sent it to you all. And anyway, the revised version's up here. So these are this year's. Because some of this work, we just began this summer.
Right, okay, thank you. Sure. All right, so some of our goals for the building this year include recycling in our cafeteria. And we, and I'll share some recycling data for you in just a moment. The goal we had in our cafeteria was to get rid of the styrofoam trays. And the first week, we used styrofoam trays. And I'll, I'll share the number of bags of garbage and so forth with you. And by this third week of September, we were using plastic trays, no styrofoam. It's a very dramatic increase. And again, we want the data team and the processes to be part of our building's culture. Some of the activities we've done regarding our equity team, our team presented what we learned about at Dr. Landau's district-wide meeting out to our building. We increased our whiteboard lab schedule to have classes for every student in the building. And then those are classes in our library meeting that students enjoy very much. The latest example of our inclusive and accessible activities was our school-wide Halloween parade, where every student got the chance to march in the parade. Our school committees, we've talked about them being mindful of making sure that our planned activities are inclusive and accessible for all students, for as many students as we can get. We've increased our meeting times for our clubs to before-school and after-school, which, you know, not every student can participate. It's not because I say they can, it's just because they can't make it sometimes. But having the two meeting times has certainly increased participation by our student body. And we are continuing our faculty's discussion on connecting mindfulness with regards to our kids. We want our kids to be reflecting on their learning, their bodies, their relationships to their peers. And we have had a daily building movement break in which I lead our morning news program. And we are hoping to add Century Hall curriculum called Zones of Regulation next year. Which is a pretty interesting concept.
What is it?
You have a, please, do tell. It's a, it's, it's a curriculum designed to really teach kids how to be aware and to self-regulate themselves. And a lot of it has to do with our staff being understanding of this child needs a break. Take a walk in the hallway and you're going to do the stations of exercises and breathing exercises and so forth in the hallways. And it's a, it's a best practice curriculum. And here's our recycling data. The first week of school, bags of garbage was twenty-four and a half average. And our recycling bags were five and a half bags average a day. And by week three, we were down to nine bags of garbage and we increased our recycling to nine bags. So those are pieces of data that we want to move in that direction. Yeah, it's pretty interesting. It's a-
And the plastic trays are, are they washable?
Yes, okay. Yep.
And we make sure that we're not, the plastic trays-
That would be worse. And, you know, and I do have to thank our PTO for coming in and supporting our student body the first week of school as well. And they came in and really showed the kids how to explicitly toss their garbage out. And here's our math vision. And I believe it sort of, it goes along with some of the equity thinking without knowing math when we created it. Our vision is to create a love of mathematics and for Sergeant students to become real-life problem solvers and thinkers. So we've, we've built a nice foundation and we want to keep it going.
Any questions?
I have a quick question. Are you, with the, back to the test scores, do you know, of course, you have to factor in participation rate, but also that the tests have changed? And do you think either one of those?
It all, that all played into it, I'm sure. You know, and with the kids who did, who opted out, that plays into it as well. But the numbers, you know, they, there are certainly positive increases.
Definitely.
Yeah.
And significant. Yeah, it's great to see. And I, and I, I don't, you know, obviously, I don't want to put everything in test scores either, but sometime, you know, if you have that data and it looks good, it's really, it's nice to see.
Yeah. I mean, we got to take care of the testing so we can just do what we want to do.
Yeah.
But that makes sense.
So the, the students that, that opt out, how does that fit into the percentage equation? Are they still counted in the total? You say I have, you know, half, is that half the total or half of the total that took the tests?
This is the, the kids who took the tests.
Yeah.
Of the kids that took the tests.
Yeah.
And, and the kids who opted out, I'm sure that's a pretty good example of kids who we've gotten ones, twos, threes, fours.
So the, I'm sorry, so the club meetings that you're talking about, you, you've got more kids engaged as, but you don't have the data point on that, right?
I didn't bring that.
Okay. Do you have clubs that are full?
We have full clubs, yes.
All right, and you, and what is your, what do you think you're going to do? Are you going to expand maybe to Club A and Club B or the same theme or?
That could certainly be an option. I'm waiting for teachers to tell me they have too many kids. They, we've got lots of kids we're including and we don't want to turn any kids away.
And is intramurals just a Sergeant thing or is that happening in other schools?
I believe in every school.
Okay.
Do, I'm sorry, one more question. Do you have a sense that if, if the clubs were were five days a week instead of three days a week, you'd still, you would get more kids to participate? Or there was some other flexibilities involved?
If we're talking about intramurals, definitely. Chess club is popular and the other clubs that we have, I would have to get some more information on that.
Okay.
Sure.
Question. The, the opt-out, do I understand you correctly, it's your opinion that those who take the test and those who opt out would distribute about the same if they were all tested? Or do you think there's any differentiation between the two sets? Or do you know?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to generalize on that sort of a answer, but my guess is there's representation from each level of the kids who're opting out.
I'm sorry, I do have one more question. If I remember, presentation has passed, part of the lab requirements was getting parent participation. Have you been able to increase that?
Yeah, we, we had parent representation helped us create the plan.
Okay. So you, so you have more parents now coming out and participating in all the activities and participating with the direction the school's going in most?
The, the answer to that question is affirmative. We, we did have good parent representation and on our lab team, if I remember correctly, we had three teachers, a TA, and two parents. And one parent wanted to do it, but had a hard time showing up each night.
All right. I mean, it sounds good, but only two parents doesn't sound like a representative sample of parent community. Are there, I mean, are they, are you?
Well, we, we did survey parents
Okay.
and teachers to get input as well prior to the creation of a lab.
Did you get good, good turnout from the parents from their answers or?
Yeah, the way, the way we did it was when we had parent visitors, we had them, we asked them to fill out a survey and we did send the survey out as well.
And how many, which percentage did you got back from that?
I'd say we got about twenty-five percent back.
Oh, that's, that's good. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much, Brian. Thanks, Brian.
Good evening, everyone. I'm really excited to share with you a lot of the work that the technology department has done in the few months that I've been here. I want to start by thanking the technology team. The department team has done a phenomenal job of getting equipment set up, performing updates on our workstations, and also setting up new interactive boards. So I'm here tonight to talk to you about some of the upgrades and updates that we performed this summer. I want to start by talking about, we upgraded nearly all of our PC workstations to Windows 10. One of the reasons we did that is that Microsoft has given an end-of-life support for Windows 7, which was the district's current version, for the year 2020. So we wanted to get out ahead of that, not be facing a time crunch. So we upgraded most of the Windows machines to Windows 10 this summer. There's just a few stragglers out there, primarily administrators and clerical. So we'll be catching up with them. Typically, over the holiday breaks is a good time to take their machines and reimagine them and upgrade them. But the teacher workstations, our lab workstations have all been upgraded. So it was a big accomplishment on behalf of the department to do that and reimage and redo those machines. Over the summer as well, if you look around, and I've included just some pictures, you'll see the access points. There's a picture on the slide. There's one up in the ceiling in the far corner. We upgraded all of the access points throughout the district, created a more robust network for the one-to-one program. We anticipated one-to-one here at the high school, the existing now one-to-one at Roundabout. And we're getting very close to being one-to-one at our elementary school. So we upgraded the access points to allow more connections simultaneously in each of the classrooms so that we have a good experience for our students and staff. The internet is fast. It's not kind of clunky and slow and buffering. So that upgrade was definitely needed. So you'll see those throughout the district. We also upgraded all teacher laptops to a Dell 5480 with an i5 processor, which is a medium road processor that can handle multiple applications at the same time. The other laptops were about four or five years old. They were nearing the end of their useful life for the teachers. And I recognize coming in that the laptop is the workhorse in the classroom from a technology standpoint for our staff. Our staff is creating their content using their laptop and they're also presenting and sharing their content to our students via their laptop. So we wanted them to have a really good machine in order to create interactive and engaging lessons without running into any technical problems or buffering or slowness when they're running multiple applications on the machine at the same time. The team also updated the district-wide automated phone attendant. So if you're calling the district, you might notice my voice. I guide you through the process, but now the extensions are accurate, the department names are accurate. So we upgraded that, or updated, I should say, that phone attendance to represent the actual extensions that are in the district. We also installed fifty-three Dell interactive boards at Roundabout. Nearly every classroom, there was only a handful that had some older model boards. They still have them. We're looking to upgrade those in the future. It was really important with the one-to-one program that we give teachers a way to present content onto the board and also give teachers the ability to allow students to share their work and present their content onto those boards in the classroom. Prior to coming in this summer, the teachers in those fifty-three rooms had no way to allow either themselves or their students to share work between each other in a real meaningful way. So our hope is that the fifty-three interactive boards at Roundabout will inspire and encourage teachers to create engaging and interactive lessons. Lessons that are more than just a PowerPoint or somebody speaking to students, but getting those students up and out of their seats, working on the board. It's touchscreen, you can draw on it, there's a couple of styluses. And the board is capable of having up to five students at a time writing on it at the same time. So you could have different graphic organizers or charts or whatever the teacher's imagination they have to have students come up and interact and present to their peers. We didn't want to forget the high school, so we installed seventeen boards here at Beacon High School. Our goal is to install a lot more in the future. We want to get every room, much like Roundabout, to one-to-one. But we're following the Chromebook rollout. So Roundabout was going one-to-one this year. It made sense that we have the boards there that support the devices and the learning. And so we installed seventeen up here at Beacon High School, primarily in special ed classrooms and ninth grade English and social studies classrooms. And I worked with Ms. Sodan, the high school principal, to determine which rooms should get those. The idea was that as ninth graders, as eighth graders, current eighth graders rise next year, they're going to have the Chromebook. They're going to be used to their teachers having an interactive board already. So these teachers will be prepared in the English and social studies classes to use them. And hopefully, you know, with budget approval this year, we can put boards into the math and science rooms in ninth grade for next year so that those students become accustomed to that sort of a presentation in their classrooms. We also installed one Dell interactive board for each elementary school, which was replacing aging boards and equipment. So these were boards that were nearing the end of their life. They were at least at a minimum seven years old, if not older. And they weren't really functioning well. I came into some help tickets for some of those rooms where the teachers were complaining. So we really wanted to show the elementary schools that they were part of this as well. And we wanted to upgrade those boards for those teachers in those buildings. One of the big undertakings that we had this year was setting up the Dell 3189 Chromebooks for our sixth and seventh grade students. So we set up and distributed close to five hundred of those Chromebooks. We also ordered a really nice Falcon AirProtect case. So I've had a lot of experience with one-to-one programs. And the one thing I've learned is you really want to have a good case if we want to get longevity out of our devices. So these devices presumably will travel with the students for the next four to five years. And having a good case will protect that device. I have a case up on the screen so that you can see it. It straps in, the Chromebook can strap into the case. It's a hard-shelled case that protects it. If you've been over the Roundabout at all, I've been really impressed. The students are doing a really great job keeping them in their cases as they move from class to class and at the end of the day during dismissal. So we're hoping to get a lot of life out of these Chromebooks and part of that is protecting the Chromebook and understanding that these are middle school students. Accidents are going to happen, they're going to drop them. But having it in the case will extend the life of that machine. Another exciting device that we deployed this summer was the Form Maker Bot 3D printers in each elementary library media center. It's exciting in the sense that students can now create something in their classroom and especially when their teachers work with our library media specialist, something that they can take home at the end of a class day. So I've been around the buildings. I've been talking to our library media specialist. I know that in some of the schools, they're making keychains. So the, the elementary students are using a program called Tinkercad in which they're learning math skills. So they're using their X and Y axis to graph out or plot out these designs. But at the end of the class or the end of the unit, they're each going to have a keychain to bring home with them. Great conversation starter for mom, dad, parent guardian when they get home at the end of the school day to discuss what they learned in school today. One of the other schools is printing out some of the characters from a book that they're reading in library class, which I thought was really cool. And another school has been printing out some miniature chess pieces for the students to show them. So the teachers are still learning how to use the Maker Bots because they are new this year. We did do training with them already. But they're, they're off and running. And I think it's a great addition to the library and the library media specialist program that we have here in Beacon. I want to talk a little bit about our ticket system, so just data. People, some people like numbers. We had about eleven hundred tickets come in since September 1st. Then this was a thirty percent increase. And that's not surprising at all, given all the upgrades that we did this summer. So we upgraded the access points, we upgraded to Windows 10. That's all changes to our staff. We upgraded our web filtering system to accommodate the Chromebooks so that we have good filtering when the students take them home and remote filtering. So there was changes made to that. So then, of course, you have teachers that say, hey, that website I used last year is blocked now. Okay, we'll add it to the whitelist. We'll catch up and update it. So we've had a thirty percent increase, but that's to be expected with the number of units that are out there. We added about five hundred Chromebooks like- We added about 500 Chromebooks, like I said, changes to Windows 10, and new interactive boards that many teachers had never used before. And we did do training with them as well prior to the school year starting. But people still have questions, which is exciting for us, I know for me, and I know my team members in the technology department are excited to go out and show our staff and our faculty members how to integrate and use this equipment in their instruction. So it wasn't really surprising that there was an increase. We kept up pretty well with the pace of getting our teachers set up, functioning, and working well. And I want to talk a little bit about the future. So one thing that I would like to do here in Beacon, and I'm working with administration to do it, is to develop a student technology help desk. It's a program that I created in my previous district. I think it's an immersive experience, it would, my vision is that it would begin at the high school, and we would give our high school students the ability to work hand-in-hand with the technology department, servicing machines. We have the resources right here, we have very talented people in the department that know a lot about computers, how to set up computers, how to respond to help tickets, and I think, and I've seen it in action, that we can develop our students' critical thinking skills, customer service skills, and we can provide that experience in-house, really at no extra cost, to have that immersive experience for them. And they can work hand-in-hand with my team members to learn, how do you image a computer? How does web filtering work? How does a help desk work? Where does my ticket go if my mom and dad submit a help ticket, or my teacher submits a help ticket, or even me as a student? Where does my ticket go? How does it respond? How do you determine the order in which you're responding? How do you keep track that you made a comment or requested information but the person hasn't gotten back to you? It's all skills that the students can develop, and I think it would be beneficial for our students and give them a really unique experience before they choose a career when they leave Beacon or choose to pursue maybe a computer science education in secondary, higher education. So what I brought today as part of my presentation is a student-created video from my last district, because I can talk about doing a help desk all day, but I think it's best to hear from the students. And they speak in this film about the experiences that they've had as being part of the help desk and what they've been learning. So I want to share that with you now. I'm going to press play, and we're off and running.
I joined Genius Bar because I figure it's a course I haven't taken yet. I want to expand what I know already about technology, and it's another way to help teachers out with things they may not know about current technology. Being in Genius Bar is like walking in the morning and like always having something new to do, always having like, you know, stuff to do. We always get to go early on winter, go to middle school, always have to, you know, maybe meet new teachers or teachers you've seen in the past and help them out with stuff if they have problems.
Well, I like to be more responsible because it just gives you a lot more like advancement in technology as you can be, and you get to know more about iPads that you have at home, or computers that you have at home, or even phones.
But as you progress, it's like, hey, we need your help. You're like, cool, I need my help. And you start to feel the sense of people depending on you, and you work as a team, and each person has their specific spot. And it teaches you the importance of teamwork and how that is so important, especially in working in the tech department, because you need to rely on everybody.
So I have found that it really creates a sense of community within a district when we have students now going back to their teachers or working with their current teachers. When they have that issue with a smart board in the classroom, once you develop an experience, a technology experience like this for students, they can jump in right in the middle of class, the teacher's having trouble figuring out the source input, and they can say, hey, this is the button you click, and we get class moving really quickly. It also gives a great experience for students to interact with their peers, and also, in some cases, some of the younger students. The students can go in and do presentations on various software products that the district is using, show their peers how to do video editing, how to create Google Slides presentations, some of those skills that they're learning in their classrooms but their peers may not be as advanced, and these students can go in and be peer-to-peer coaches for each other and for their teachers. And I, the coolest thing that I've seen happen in a program like this is the teacher is learning now from the students. And most of us know that our children and our students have a lot more breadth and knowledge of technology than many of the adults in the room. So this is a great opportunity for the kids to share and showcase their knowledge and skills and really make a positive impact. In conclusion, I did want to share, and I believe Dr. Landau shared with you, that our instructional technology plan was also approved. It's something that we worked on this summer, it's a requirement of the New York State Ed Department. So it came in and we had to get going on that very, very quickly because we had a deadline, it was due in October, and we did receive approval just within the last week that it was approved by the State Ed Department. So those are all the updates for the technology department. I'd be happy to take any questions you have at this time.
I just wanted to add a comment that at NISBA, we had the chance to meet some of your former students, they had amazing work there, and it was one of the highlights of NISBA for me, honestly, we were, they took us through, me, they took me through the help desk process, the badge process. They miss you, we're glad we have you. But it was, it was really, it was great to see how confident they were and how much they, you know, they just presented so well, it was, it was just a really nice demonstration in addition to the video.
Thank you.
Do we have an update on the one-to-one progress, the Chromebooks? Everybody having a Chromebook, how is that going?
Oh, it's been excellent. So I've been in Round bout a lot, walking the halls, peeking in classrooms, talking to teachers. I can, solely from a data perspective, if we look, our Google Classroom use has doubled since the end of last May. So if you look at the data and the reporting, our teachers are using more Google Classrooms, which is, is normal, it would be a normal process now that every student has a device and they can connect in the classroom. What Google Classroom is, for those of you who may not know, is a system in which teachers can distribute content or share their presentations or create like a forum for students and teachers to interact in a digital, in a digital world. So with your Chromebook now, the student comes into the classroom, the teacher might say, go to my classroom, my Google Classroom, and I have this, this morning's due now. And the activity is posted on the classroom for the students. And the, and the student can write back on a wall to the teacher and say, hey, I'm having questions, and their peers may be able to jump in, the teacher may jump in and have those sort of interactions and conversations with the students. Walking around the halls, there's lots of classrooms that are using Chromebooks. It's a really nice mix because I'm not a proponent for like we should walk to every room and just see Chromebooks and kids staring at screens. You want to have a nice balance, and you're seeing that in Round bout Middle School right now. If you get a chance, I definitely encourage you to walk around the rooms. I've gotten a lot of thank yous from the teachers and our staff for getting, A, the equipment out and set up in time for the start of school, but for the new boards, for making it meaningful for them to present new content. We actually have training for teachers tomorrow as part of our Professional Development Day on the creation of content for the new boards, so how to create engaging and interactive content, not just PowerPoints where we're doing direct instruction and I'm just speaking to you as a teacher. We want to have that collaborative environment, we want to encourage them to share the student work on the boards. So from what I'm seeing and the things that I'm hearing in Round bout, I think it's been a tremendous success.
What's the general plan, where do we go from here?
High school.
High school?
And then we take the existing devices that are here on carts in the high school, we push those to our elementary schools to make the whole district one-to-one. The reason we push the older devices to the elementary school is obviously the students are a lot younger and they're more prone to dropping them, so if we lose one or two in the elementary schools, it's not as much of an economic loss to the district.
And before any parents freak out about the elementary school thing, it's, one-to-one's a little different at the elementary level, and now taking it around everywhere in first grade and, yeah, so. It's just they have a device in the, to access during the school day.
Yeah. One-to-one in the elementary school is, it's mostly a cart-based program, the kids aren't bringing them home every day with them, it's a lot different type of a program. But again, we want to make sure that all the students at that level and the teachers too have the ability to be creative, and if they, if they want to, they can use those devices. What's really nice about one-to-one is we don't have to worry about teachers fighting or signing out computer labs anymore. They each have that ability to do something interactive and engaging with computers, research, et cetera, write, content creation right in their classrooms.
I have one question about your technology plan?
Yes.
Well, two questions, actually. In each of the, you know, three goals, there's your cost, estimated cost listening.
Sure.
So is that for the entire goal, that's, you know, an estimate of what you're, you think it's going to cost, or is each action, I know it has the same, each action has similar costs?
Yeah, so the goal, like, the way New York State asked me to construct the tech plan is kind of funny. So the goal has an overall number that the committee, and we did form a subcommittee of the technology committee that previously existed in the school year, you have to remember it's summertime and it's hard to get teachers and staff in to work with you because they're on vacation and so on and so forth. So we had a subcommittee, we looked at it, and for each goal, we set an overall number. Now, to be honest, the numbers are somewhat imaginary because we have budget for every little thing, but we take ballpark costs. So what's, so if we're adding a staff member for an instructional coach, we got to figure in salary and benefits at a minimum. So you're looking at, you know, a hundred and something thousand. And then we, and we went from there. If we're looking at equipment with some of the requirements as well, so we're looking at the current cost of Chromebooks or computers, and we're saying we need, I don't know, I don't just pull any numbers out of thin air right now, but in the plan we had numbers. So if we need 50, we're estimating that cost. New York State is well aware that the school districts are just ballparking the numbers, but when we get into breaking it out where all the numbers are the same, then when you actually have to put it into what they call the New York State Ed Portal, it says that they, they want a line item for every little thing. So when the committee met, we had this overarching number for the goal, and then we just had to divide it up to meet the New York State requirements. So that could be fluctuating, give or take, but we had to have a line in there for a certain amount, and then at the end, it had to add up to our overall number for that goal.
Okay, the other comment I have is, some of these talk about development of spaces, and so if you have any kind of capital type of improvements, you know, you have an end date of 2021, think about really putting that plan together next year because we're really looking at, at a large project, maybe in 2021 or 22, so you want to get, it has to be in the pipeline really early.
Definitely.
Probably starting next year.
Yeah, we've already started engaging with vendors, looking at our existing spaces, having conversations with teachers throughout the district. I've met with Mike Gersh up in the TV studio, I've met with our library media specialist to enhance or expand our MakerSpace areas. Ms. Soto's expressed an interest of creating a MakerSpace area here at the high school. So those conversations are definitely underway already, and I am aware that we want to get, you know, lining up the projects and getting some numbers and funding for that in the future.
All right, thank you. I have a question. Well, I've only heard almost entirely positive things about the one-to-one Chromebooks, a lot of excitement for families in particular, but one concern that I've heard is about access to internet for low-income families.
Okay.
I was curious if there's something that you've had any experience with to find solutions for, about, I think we can do it to get more access.
Yeah, so definitely, any program I've ever created, this always comes up. So one of the reasons that in the previous programs I've used, and it's not something I brought to Beacon, they were, you guys were already doing it, is using Google as kind of your primary platform for content creation, distribution, and access. So the nice part about Google is it offers offline mode. So any document that the student creates or downloads while they're here on the campus, they can set the offline mode and use at home. So that engages the students that don't have internet connectivity at home and allows them to work and complete assignments when they, when they go off campus or offsite or somewhere where there's no internet connection. So in all my programs that I've created, Google has been the driver because of its offline capabilities, and that's how we've addressed that need. Happy to discuss with students individually if they're having trouble enabling the offline features, but we did a presentation, and I did the presentation to staff, especially in Round bout, the first day of Teacher Day, not Student Day, showing them how to enable and teach their students how to enable the offline features. So we showed the staff before we gave the kids the Chromebooks how to enable that feature with the anticipation that there may be students out there that have connectivity issues at home.
Have you heard any, have you ever heard of anyone enacting some kind of like access to hotspots, you know, like Optimum WiFi, which I think most people use, they have there, how they're hotspots? Does any kind of system to, to, kind of, for application or just to all students to get some access to internet at home? Is that?
Yeah, I, I haven't heard of like a program that's just like a one-size-fits-all. There's lots of programs out there, obviously Verizon Hotspots is one way to go, Kijit is another one, there's been school districts that put WiFi on buses so kids could have WiFi when they're traveling back and forth to school. I mean, there's lots of different models that you can look up on the internet, but there's not one like solution for any one district. So I mean, it's something that if it's a larger issue, we could explore more. To my knowledge, it hasn't been a large issue in the district. I've only heard of one or two students that had an issue initially getting the offline mode to work, and I know Mr. Saltish and his team has worked with those students to help them access the materials that they need.
Okay. Follow-up to the, to the WiFi, and thank you for hitting the ground running in the district, we really appreciate it. So if a student has homework and they have to post, but they don't have WiFi access, how does that work?
Sure. So I would, I would hope that the teachers are understanding that the students can post when they come back to campus, that's the model that I see in, in my past programs. So you do your work at home, soon as you hit the building, you have WiFi again, and you can post your assignment once you enter the building, you know, after you're home for the evening. So the next morning, you know, there should be a window of time where the students have an opportunity to submit their work, and that's the model that I see in for students that don't have connectivity at home, and it's worked really well. So you've done your homework, you've done everything that's required of you, you just put, click that submit button because you don't have a connection at home, but once you enter our buildings, you're automatically connected again and you can submit that assignment before class.
And do we, do we have Optimum as our provider, and if we do, is it possible to perhaps register individual Chromebooks to families that don't have their own access so that they can access it at that point?
Sure, Optimum is not our provider.
Okay, all right. Who's our provider?
Crown Castle.
Oh.
They're also the provider for almost every school district through the Duchess County offices.
All right. Following up on Ms. Casey Al's point about community-wide access, I think that may be a bigger issue than just us. There are some communities that have explored that, not just here but in other countries, and some of them have made serious progress, but somebody has to make an investment, and you can't have one big WiFi tower because the mechanics of it, the electronics of it just don't permit, to cover this whole district with one tower like a radio station. But you need a series of interconnected drivers here and there that transmit, and if you have any background in that or any knowledge, I think it'd be interesting to hear more about it, even if you're talking in fantasy land to start, but that's where you have to start, because there's benefits to this that go way beyond just the convenience, there's really an equity issue because of the student, if you have students who don't have access at home, and I think this is true of some, maybe we should do a survey and find out exactly, do we have a big problem, a little problem, or is it, you can solve it one by one here and there, or do you need a community-wide solution? But if you have a more wired or wireless, wirelessly-served community, that's a real economic plus for the whole, the whole group of residents who live in that area.
Yeah, I mean, it's worth definitely exploring, and, and I haven't had a moment because we've been so busy here at Beacon, but in my past programs, I have surveyed the community, and I'm not going to speak to those results and apply them to Beacon. But what we found was, we had similar concerns from Board of Education, concerned parents, concerned of community organizations. We actually surveyed the students and their families, it was, we, each time we found it was a very small percentage that did not have the access, it was much smaller than anybody had ever anticipated. Just past surveys, different communities, different districts, just sharing that thought process, but it's definitely worth exploring.
Yeah, I'm just going to add, I mean, even though there's a small percentage, I mean, it's still, they still, there's still faces and there's still students.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so wherever we can figure out, perhaps as a proposal to us, you know, we'd be open to it.
Okay.
Can students use their phones as, as hotspots for WiFi on their, to the Chromebook or no?
Yeah, I mean, if a student has a cell phone that has a data plan, yes, they can set up a mobile hotspot. I've heard of students doing that in some, some of my other districts, that where they don't have a wired router internet connection, oh, yes, people have set up mobile hotspots, and they can do that here in Beacon, there's nothing preventing that device from connecting to a mobile hotspot.
Of course, you have to have a plan that you can pay for.
Correct.
Right, they pay for the data.
Yeah, the data plan.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the funding issue of particular individuals to discuss whether bargaining with the D A O P and the State Legal Counsel from the school, from the school attorney, state law attorney, finding privilege.
Still no.
Anthony, is there a second?
Listen.
Listen.
Yep.
And...
And comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. O, board is expected to return forty-five minutes after a grand. All right, thank you for your patience. We have no corrections to the agenda.
Um, actually, I'd like to make a motion to add the agenda. I'd like to add under new business, we don't have new business, I'd like to add a new business about the bus pickup for, for parents who have their kids participate in sports.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
I'm sorry, I have a comment.
Sure.
I feel like this is a very sort of granular, it's like we've decided that this is the problem to participation in sports. I'm not sure we've asked.
I, I intended, and it's just out of order of events, but I intended in my committee report for the policy committee to contextualize where that may be coming from a bit. So maybe it would seem to make more sense.
Is it, I mean, is it contextualizing in that the people in the committee meeting brought it up? Or is it contextualizing, like, we talked to the staff and we talked to the director of athletics, and we, we've identified this problem, and so we want to get this problem solved?
I see, well, more so the former, but it's the...
I guess in my opinion, I think that identifying the problem better would maybe then discuss the specific solution to the problem.
If I can add to that, to comment period, I think we can have the discussion during that item. I don't necessarily think we're proposing anything to make a decision on, but I would like to make it an agenda item, so we can have that open discussion.
Sure, and I know it came through through emails, I just never heard about it in public comments, so I was waiting for, and that's the reason why I didn't add it as part of the agenda, because it was never publicized and I never, there was never pre-discussion about it. So I didn't feel comfortable just adding an item to an agenda without having any type of communication as to where it's coming from, how it came about, how this topic come up. I know that there was a policy committee meeting, and that it seemed to stem from that piece, but it was never publicly stated in, in board comments or in any dialogue as to how this came about and so forth. So this is definitely something that if you ask for an item through it, and this is the way that as a trustee, you could bring it up to add an item to the agenda, so I have no problem with that piece. I just didn't feel comfortable doing it without having dialogue publicly.
I just have a question too. Is this outside, is this, how does this differ from what the discussion that we're going to have as it relates to the goals that emerge, or the strategic plan, and how we apply that to budget priorities? Because transportation will be a part of that discussion.
I think that this is directly an objective that we should work towards with the strategic plan. The conversation that we had in the policy meeting was about something specific, like a tactic, that should be part of a larger strategy or objective, so.
So maybe the, I mean, maybe the conversation is more not about busing, but about participation.
Yeah, I, I would actually agree with that.
Well, again, let me just, let me just do a point of order. I mean, I think we're having the discussion about the discussion. Why don't we just add it to the agenda and have the discussion?
Yeah.
What is the topic? Sorry, transportation for?
I, I don't, if I may, I don't...
Well, just let him clarify what his motion was.
So my motion was to talk about transportation. All right, so we make the, my mo, I like to make a motion that we discuss the lack of transportation home from clubs and sports as a barrier of participation for kids.
Is that the same motion that you made previously? Now, what was the motion that you originally made?
I, I can't repeat, I can't repeat it twice. If you didn't write it down, I can't repeat it.
Kelly, did you get what the original motion was?
I'm not really clear, because there was discussion about adding the item to the agenda, and then it went into kind of the comment and question without the actual motion.
All right, so it's, so your motion is to have a discussion item to add transportation as a, as a barrier to participation for kids in participating in clubs and sports. Okay, and Alyssa, you, Alyssa, you second it?
I think I second it, yes.
Yes, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
So it's six to two?
I didn't say anything.
So... Should we do one of you again?
Roll call? Can you do a roll call on that, Kelly?
Mr. Betterbit?
Yeah, we have to.
Aye. Mr. Caselyal?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Radkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Skewer?
Opposed.
Mr. White?
Opposed. Six to two.
Thank you.
All righty. All right, so that item will be added as new business, which will be after unfinished business. Okay, any other items on the agenda to review? Seeing none, we're gonna go to student, student and school presentations. Come on down.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Daisy Okwueye. I'm a senior here at Beacon High School. And I'm here to present a new club that me and Annie, I can only, wanted to start in school. So as a senior, I've been here for a little while now. And you'd be surprised how many girls in Beacon High School feel like they don't have a place to speak up for themselves or actually be heard without inhibitions. And thus, WOW was born. WOW being the Women of the World Club, I'll be honest with you. And there is a sheet that I placed on the desk over there, to be coming around shortly. So our primary, our primary goal for this club is not to tell students how or what to think in this feminist-oriented group that we'll be starting. By this, I mean that we simply wanted to create a space for conversation to train into potential actions, where students can talk about subjects that are important to them, especially the young women of our school. Ideas that are too often disregarded as unimportant, unimportant, and issues I have seen some within the high schools, scoff and at and gloat. Whether that may be the new toilet tree dispensers in the girls' bathroom, an idea that a student supporter of this club had proposed even last year. Or family relationships, personal experiences, inspirations, aspirations, and just about anything else that may, they may have in mind in the meeting. We believe this club will be a great service to the school, helping it bring VHS forward into an era of increasing openness, like the Gay Straight Alliance that we have now. Inclusivity is one of the backbones of this club. Any person who is comfortable with and supportive of the discussions we will have would like, and would like to contribute in a manner that maintains the open environment of the meetings will be welcomed without hesitation. To be exclusionary would be to undermine the very purpose of our endeavor. The empowerment and self-assuredness we seek to cultivate will only succeed if we are able to absorb and take into account the views of others outside ourselves. The agenda, which is going around, I believe, we age principal, Principal Soto has listed media activities, fundraiser ideas, including book drives and ways to help raise money for domestic peace shelters. And then events we'd like to pull within the club, such as a self-defense class. In short, it is our hope that the board will give a couple of girls the benefit of the doubt. Strengthening, strengthening these students, the lifeblood of the school, is a process we'd like to bring into the forefront while making high school a more enjoyable experience for everyone. And yes, this is our proposal for Women of the World Club, and I, that you will view it favorably.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So you've been in the school for three years now?
Four years.
Four, well, this is your fourth, I guess. And what is, what made you feel like this was the time to, to pursue this?
Especially in the current political and social environment, I feel like, especially having an open area where students can speak freely, where there's kind of this sentiment that there isn't a place to do that right now. And sort of issues that I've seen with that are some students, even when teachers are talking about things or we're watching a video about, that involves something like sexual assault, students might, there are certain students who would scoff at that, who would not take it seriously, and I've seen it. So I felt like this especially was the time to address that and create a space where we can all address that, so.
And do you have a sense of who your advisor would be, if you'd like to have them to your advisors?
Yes, there is a student, a teacher in this school, Ms. Gaspar, she's an English teacher. And she, we brought the club up to her to hopefully spread to other teachers in the school. But so far, the assist, one of the assistant principals, Ms. Sims, has also shown interest. So we sort of have her in our corner too. And if there are any other teachers who might be interested in being advisors, Ms. Gaspar is completely, like, she wants to waive the stipend, so that, yes, she doesn't have anything to do with that, and...
Have you approached Mrs. Soto about this?
Yes, we have. We had a discussion with her, we had a meeting with her, we brought the sheet that I said is probably going around. Yeah, we talked to her.
So I don't know, as a board, do we have to, do we approve the...
What, I was just gonna jump in and say thank you so much for coming and sharing this. I think it sounds like a great idea. What I'll do is I will, I'll talk to Mrs. Soto. I'll probably see her tomorrow, because I'll be over here. And what we sort of do is we, we do an approval of the advisor, and it's usually through a board vote, like we've done for some other clubs. The board may be noticing that we have some other new clubs on the agenda tonight for the high school. So I know Mrs. Soto's really trying to kind of reinvigorate the club process a little bit. So I'll talk with her tomorrow, and we'll see what needs to get done to get it moving on my end. Okay, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That was fantastic. Yeah, I was looking to see.
I know, can we clap? Yeah.
All right, do we have any parent groups? Seeing none, we're gonna move to open to the public. No one has signed up. Is there any members of the public that would like to address the board? Seeing none, we're gonna go to superintendent's report.
Okay, just a few things to do a quick update on tomorrow. We have no school for students, but, but our teaching staff, both parent professionals and teachers, will be attending a lot of professional development tomorrow. We have a wide range of things going on tomorrow. We're gonna be focusing on culturally responsive teaching, restorative practices, some literacy initiatives. The science curriculum work is going to be ongoing tomorrow. Some of our departments and teams of teachers will also have time to meet. And so we are very excited. All of these days that we have, not all of these, we don't have many, but when we have one of these days, we treat it like a very precious resource. And so we're trying to get a lot of different professional development activities in tomorrow that reflect the things that we're working towards as a district. So we're very excited about tomorrow. And just to remind the board, we are doing, we're kind of ending the day with a little treat for everybody. And we're, this is open for all district employees to stop by high school. We're gonna have donuts and cider to end the day and, and power people for that drive home with a little sugar. So, so we would love board members to come join us tomorrow, two forty-five, right in the main entry of the high school. The work for the strategic plan has been ongoing. The thought exchange has been getting a lot of participation. I have the numbers right in front of me right now. We have, we've had a hundred and seventy people participate in the thought exchange, sharing two hundred and ten ideas to this question. What are the most important skills and attributes that Beacon students should acquire to ensure success in life, learning, and work beyond school? So we have a few days left of the thought exchange. We'll keep pushing it out, but the people who've been involved have rated those ideas four thousand and eight hundred times. It's kind of this ranking system, and it's, it's cool. So if you haven't had a chance, we have the link on Facebook, we have it on our website. I'll do one more reminder a little bit later this week for folks to participate. The next step is that the Strategic Planning Committee meets on November sixteenth for an all-day retreat where we will work on creating this graduate profile using information from this and also information from other sources. We're excited about that day. DIA is letting us have their education space for free, and so we're really excited about having an inspirational place to do this work. And then we're actually going to do another thought exchange. I've been monitoring what's been going into the thought exchange for the last couple of weeks. And the next thought exchange will be more specifically about like programs and things that, specific things people want to see happen in the district. This one, this question that we're starting out with is a little bit more philosophical, and the thought exchange will get a little bit more practical. And just, you know, we have lots of great ideas that come to the surface. And one, I think started today, or is starting soon, is Alyssa Soto and John Geometic collaborated on a new idea for our winter athletes. They created kind of a study hall tutoring experience for our student athletes in the cafeteria from about two thirty to five every day. And so Karen Pagano opened up some food, so the kids have access to purchase some food. National Honor Society students will be there to help students with homework or studying. We have a teacher chaperone, we'll have a, a security staff there, and also just teachers, you know, kind of filtering in and out to also check on kids and help, help our student athletes out too. So that's a cool new idea that's just kind of happened, happened now. So there are, like I mentioned, we have some new clubs. We have multicultural club on the Board of Genetic, Girls Who Code Club. Your club idea is awesome, and so we'll be talking to Mrs. Soto about that tomorrow. But I have been loving the new ideas coming out of all of our schools, and I thought this one was worth talking about just briefly, so you know that yet another new idea is happening at the high school. And that is it for my report.
I have a question for Dr. Lam. How can, how are you engaging parents that can't participate in thought exchange, but they don't have...
There's, it says on the thing that there's an Android. Like, I think that it went through on the superintendent's blog, and then it's also gone home by paper.
There's a, there's a iPhone app there, unfortunately, it's not an Android app. We are now doing in-person focus groups for this round, just because the timeframe is a little short, but we are gonna be doing some in-person focus groups for that sort of next round of questions, which is more programs and things that you want to see in the city school district. Those we would hope to be targeting to folks who may not be inclined to do it online.
Thank you very much. It's exciting news to hear what's going on, especially with the sports after-school clubs and stuff.
Yeah.
Good job. All right, unfinished business. So at the last board meeting, it was decided by the board that we would write a letter to the New York State Empire State Development Chair to see if we could have a seat at the table or a, have an elected official, City Board of Education member be included on the committee. So we drafted a letter, had our attorneys review it, they made some edits, and it's shared with you on Board Docs. It says, it has come to our attention that there is a committee consisting of local elected officials from the city of Beacon and Dutchess County to review the RFP for the property Camp Beacon adjacent to Beacon High School. We are reaching out to ask for a representative, a representative from the Beacon City School District Board of Ed to be included on this committee, as it is important to us to have knowledge about the potential ways the land will be utilized. Thank you for your consideration, and a prompt response to this request will be greatly appreciated. Does anybody have any issues with that? Does anybody have any issues with that?
Anthony?
Just, um, I think it's important to highlight to the Empire State Development Corporation that we're not going to participate in the RFP, um, because if we did, that would be a direct conflict of interest.
We would have to submit a RFP to participate, correct?
Not in the local advisory group, I'm just saying, the intent here is to get on the local advisory group of elected officials. And, and I think we should say that we don't intend to participate in the RFP process as a vendor, or however you wanna call it. That way, we don't.
But don't we have to put in a request for proposal to have the RFP?
Yeah, the RFP's already out, they're looking for bids.
Right, and we haven't submitted an RFP.
And, and we're not going to, we're asking to be on the elected official.
The elected official, there's an advisory panel that will be helping go through the proposals that are received.
You were just saying that, Anthony, because we did, you, you went on the tour earlier, that there, they might be thinking that we would.
We did, yeah. Yeah, we, we were, we were, we were contenders at first, and we just wanna make it clear that we're not contenders now. That way, there's no confusion with the Empire State Development folks that we're trying to do, we're trying to work on both ends.
So add a sentence in there that we do not intend, we are not intending to send an RFP in.
We're not, yeah, we're not intending to submit a proposal, um, as part of the RFP process.
Okay.
I, I think that should be the first sentence, to be honest with you, that, that way everything else flows. Um, and also, uh, Terrence Cho is the liaison for the, uh, local advisory group of elected officials.
He's the one spearheading that committee?
Yeah.
I have a question.
Any other?
Anthony, maybe you can answer it.
Sure.
So the committee consists of local, local elected, elected officials to review the RFP or to review the proposals? It's true, the RFP has already been issued.
Yeah, yeah, the, the P stands for proposals, the, so they would get proposals back, and then elected officials would also weigh in on.
Right. So I feel like the language here in the first sentence, the committee consisting of local elected officials from the city of Beacon and Dutchess County to review the proposals for the property.
True.
Correct?
Yes. That's, that's a good, that's a catch.
Sorry, I'm grammar.
No, I'm broken English for the time being.
Okay, so I have adding a sentence that we are not intending to send an RFP proposal for the property, that after RFP, it should say proposal for the property, and that it's Terrence Chu who is spearheading the committee.
It should be proposals instead of RFP. The RFP is the request, the proposal are, is the proposals.
Proposals plural, yeah.
Okay, so take out RFP.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
How forward you, uh, Terrence Cho's, uh, nu- number and, uh, title and, uh, email address, Anthony, if you want?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, is everybody fine with the addition to the letter and then having it sent out?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you want to come back to the board prior to the sending out, or you guys okay with me making the adjustments and then?
The adjustments, because I think time is kind of, yes, sure.
Yeah, I'm okay with the, just going on.
Okay. Good, okay. All right, now we have new business that was added to the agenda, um, earlier. It is for transportation as a barrier to access extracurricular activities, uh, and sports. So would it be appropriate for me to give a little background to how this, this was born? Um, this is kind of, I'll take that out of my, my committee reports. Um, so one of the, one of the policies that we reviewed, and it is related in a way to the conversation, is the granting access to extracurricular for the homeschool students policy, which is a specific policy that came up for review during our last policy committee. While we were, we spent the month researching that, um, committee members, Anthony, um, created some, generated a spreadsheet of information in the neighboring districts, I looked at some other information as well. One of the primary points that came up around this conversation was about equity of access to extracurricular programs for all of the students. Um, and while we have a specific policy around access for homeschool, for students in our homeschool community, we don't necessarily have a specific policy that addresses inequity of access across, uh, for all of our students. So something that's come up, I've heard it come up in our members from the public who visit diversity committee, uh, I've heard it from members of the public coming personally, and I've heard, uh, Anthony mentioned he heard from this, Floran spoke to, said this was a concern that she had heard the public repeating to her, was, and Alyssa as well, spoke length about this, uh, from your own experiences, which I wanna share for you. Um, this, uh, if we're opening access, something that we're really concerned about is how do we make our extracurricular programs, uh, available to all the students in our district, right? Uh, what are some of the barriers to that? And one of the, the primary barriers, which is being repeated, is how are students going to feel that they can participate in after-school programs if they don't have a way to get home? You know, if you have students who are just walking down Main Street waiting for parents, if they don't, if there's not a, if there's not a bus to take them home. So we wanted to bring that to conversation for feasibility, for, we, we don't have that information. Uh, I've had informal conversations with, with people in transportation, but not, not formally addressing this. So that was kind of the, the context of where this was born.
So, so I'll jump in, so the issue you're trying to solve is, or the question is, how, how can we increase the participation or access of our after-school programs or clubs? Get more kids involved, another way you said it, how can we get more and more students involved in these? And you're, you're saying that one of the barriers could possibly be the, the, the transportation issue. I mean, that's what, because there might be, there may be, there may be other, we may wanna look at, you know, whatever, you know, the list, or have, have, Matt, you know, poll some of the, some of the, get some additional information. But transportation certainly is probably one of them.
Absolutely, I think that was, my, my takeaway from that discussion was not that we were conclusive in any way, that that is, you know, we're not in a position to say that transportation or busing is necessarily the primary barrier. Um, it was more of that's an open question, and how do we approach answering that question, right? Mention a poll, connect to a poll, can we look at the bus schedules, can we look at clubs, what time they get out, look at enrollment? There's a lot of questions, uh, there was, there are enough angles to try and ask or answer that question that it seemed were bringing to a discussion.
If I may, uh, we think we have a late bus three days a week, uh, at the high school, is that right?
Yes.
It's, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then on Mondays and Fridays, we staff them with a regular run, is that right?
Right.
Is there a late bus at middle school as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that the same as, as a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
I believe so, in my experience, that late bus isn't late enough to get kids home.
What, what time, time does the late bus go?
The late bus goes at, uh, three forty-five, three fifty. The primary idea behind the late bus, um, is for students who might be working with a teacher after school or, or students in clubs. It's, it's not geared for athletes, for, you know, three fifty would be kind of unrealistic. We run five runs, if I'm looking at this correctly, so, um.
So if we were to move the late bus later, then it's, maybe helps one group and, and then kind of, you know.
Well, we would wanna keep this, I think, you know, uh, we may wanna tweak the time for roundabout a little bit, or somehow push it back for roundabout by a few minutes, um, but it, it would, if we wanted to do, uh, sports, we would need to add just like yet another run, or runs, or whatever.
This, is, sports the, I, I thought I heard clubs, is sports the main problem with the timing?
Clubs works with this, this bus, the, the three forty-five bus, most of the after-school clubs are done by then.
I think it's.
Drama in the most kind of heated days of it, but, um.
I think we're trying to discuss a topic that we don't know if it is, uh, a need, right? We don't have any information, we're go, we'll be going through a budget process, we'll be going through a strategic plan, and we're having a conversation with a lot of assumptions here. One is, we don't know, I, I haven't heard that students are not participating in sports or extracurricular activities because of transportation piece. And I live out in a physical area where transportation's, uh, more vital, right? Um, so I, I think it's hard, and we can have broad conversations, however, I don't know if it's.
Just, just one more fact about the buses, we do also run, um, when the elementary, uh, schools are doing the IRP.
IRP.
IRP stands for what?
Instructional reinforcing program.
Yeah, we're gonna change that name at some point. Um, but when we do that, uh, in Jan, from January to April, we run eight buses for students to participate in that across our four schools. Um, so, and just, I know this is just sort of random information, but the, just the other day, these, these runs that we do, we had about thirty kids make use of the five runs, um, the high school, roundabout, are sort of combined. So one of the, one of the issues, just being from other districts that have done this, one of the issues, uh, with the athletic, uh, runs is finding drivers to do it. Um, we have a lot of drivers out doing games and stuff, and so that was, that's kind of our first priority. Uh, another issue is there's limited stops, because it's, we're not actually, you know, running like, uh, bus stops like we do during the school day, and so a lot of kids after a long practice don't wanna get dropped off like three quarters of a mile from their house. And so what has happened in other places is just like kids don't tend to access this a lot because they would prefer to get home some other way, by either getting picked up or a ride from someone else or whatever. It's just something I've seen, it may not be in Beacon. Uh, but what we can do is, uh, either have it be a part of budget conversations, um, bring Mr. Giometta and, and Miss Soto in to talk about, not necessarily into a board meeting, but I'll speak with them and work with them on things that they feel, um, would, uh, increase access. I think one thing in terms of clubs, we do these runs for elementary for the IRP program. Um, one thing we can certainly look into is also like, should we be running buses for the elementary clubs? Um, so that's a whole other issue, I mean, there's lots to look at, uh, with this, but it certainly would have a, a price tag to it. Um, I think for sports, we should also look at other reasons why students may not be participating. Um, some of the things that I hear anecdotally is, uh, kids who have, um, jobs after school, sometimes that's a higher priority than being on a, a, a team. Uh, another thing we hear sometimes is kids being expected to babysit their younger siblings instead of being on a sport. Um, but I, I will dig into this, uh, further and can report back in lots of different ways.
Cause I think you define a little bit more of the, you know, get to the problem statement, you know, clubs, sports, increased participation. Cause it's not, probably not just busing, right? Because there's other options, we hear that you're doing some tutoring and some after, right, after club time, type of efforts. Those are great, um, kids within a mile and a half walk, walk home, I mean, that's what we do now.
Yeah.
There's local, you know, the local bus maybe comes, you know, there's, there could be many solutions.
Well, and one of the issues, one of the issues with winter sports, um, is that, you know, gym time, our winter sports practices are staggered kind of all throughout the evening. Uh, so I think even logistically, if we were to do it, it'd probably just be for fall and spring, because, I mean, we have some basketball teams practicing from six to eight at night, or sometimes even later, just cause getting that gym time amongst all of our, all of our teams can be sort of a logistical challenge. Um, I think that's why John, or Alyssa and John created that tutoring thing, to kind of give kids a place to stay until some of them have that access to the gym. So we have, we have creative administrators, uh, working with athletics and our high school students, and I also wanna obviously turn to them about ways they think might increase participation too, so.
Yeah.
Those are just some initial thoughts, um, but we'll dig into it more. All right.
I mean, the feedback that I, that you didn't mention there, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I have personal experience with, um, middle school modified sports. With, um, the modified football team, for example, um, practice ends at four thirty, when the kids are done changing and they're ready to, they're ready to leave, there's, it's five o'clock. And I know in my, from my personal experience, kids are walking to Main Street and hanging out in the pizzeria for an hour until a parent or guardian is available to come into town and pick them up, who, who may be coming from work. So, you know, and this, I see this with my own child, but with other kids that are on the team as well. So it's brought to my mind a safety concern of kids walking now, it's dark at five o'clock. Although modified sports for fall are over, or at least football is over, um, and there, there could be alternative solutions, like a carpool, like that there's some structure to get kids home rather than loitering on Main Street for an hour until mom gets into town from work. So, the reason that I brought it up in the policy meeting was that we're, uh, looking at ways to eliminate barriers for some kids to participate in after-school activities, where we still have barriers for other, other students who are enrolled in, in our schools. And what can we do to identify and break down those barriers? So it wasn't, for me, it wasn't so much that, you know, this is why kids aren't participating, but what can we do to have equity for all students to have access?
Absolutely, and my, my only issue with it is that I think that we should collect all of the barriers.
Yes, I agree.
Because we won't be able to solve all of them, they will all have a cost to solving them, and so we will then have to prioritize them and decide which ones we can, we can reasonably.
Yeah, and in my, you know, thinking, when was the meeting, two, a week ago, two weeks ago? Of course, I've been thinking on this now for two weeks, and realizing the bigger objective, it's more about the bigger objective of equity and identifying those barriers rather than this small part of the problem that may not be the biggest problem. So, I, I agree with you, Meredith, um, it just takes the hindsight of two weeks.
Well, I think there's, there's value, and I'm sure this is not gonna be the only, only issue, obviously, as we go through our goals and identify our objectives, there are gonna be numerous places we can identify that we intuitively, or we have heard from, or rumors, you know, the, the unofficial information that we have that points towards potential causes of inequity. And I feel like as we assemble that, that list, we kind of have this idea there's some areas that may probably contribute to some inequity, might create some of these obstacles. We can then give, give them more targeted attention to understanding those. You know, it is, we don't know the extent to which, uh, after-school transportation is an obstacle to access for low-income families or for families that just depend on the bus and their, their parents aren't available to pick up. There, there are different ways that could be. Um, I'm sure there will be others, but what we can do is think about what are ways that we can better understand those. Through polling, through looking at the clubs, by talking to parents, by, um, assembling a feasibility assessment in terms of knowing what those costs are in order to make that prioritization. So, it's kind of like a preliminary conversation that we'll have probably on more similar subjects.
Well, I think it's, it's, it's very good, and I do, and I do believe that identifying what the issue is and then coming, getting the minds together to think of, uh, the different alternatives. It may not always be a costly solution. It may not always be a costly solution, and we should always keep that in mind as part of our fiscal responsibility. Cause we always, we, we're looking at new programs, we wanna bring in and continue to build. So there may, there may be solutions that we come up with that are not, are not necessarily a new bus route. It may be something else.
Maybe it's a teen parent who organizes.
Until you get it out on the paper and you put the right people, you really think about it, that's when you develop the solutions. And it, and it may make sense to, to, to add more cost or, or do things slightly different. So, that's, that's why I'm glad we're having this conversation because of this, good point about this in particular plus other things that are gonna come up. So I appreciate it.
Any other comments? All right. We're gonna put the committee reports, including board comments. We're gonna start with Annie, Noah?
Um, so, so we have, we're almost done with that survey that we talked about at the last meeting. Um, we're just finishing some questions up with that. We're gonna meet with Miss Soto and figure out how we're gonna bring it to the students, whether we're gonna do it before a certain subject or study all this other stuff, figuring out all of that. But once we have those results, we will bring them to you and we'll, we'll talk about those. A few more things is, um, NHS started their Project Hope, which is when food cans are collected for local food pantries, and, um, how it works is each class will bring a man and then the class with the most candy in a Project Hope, which is, in a couple of weeks, we'll have a ice cream social, which will be, um, during their lunch period. And, uh, so we had, uh, Dogg costume live art tournament, which was on the twenty-eighth of October, I think, and that was put on by NHS, and that was to raise money for breast cancer awareness month. And I think we did five hundred and fifty dollars that day for breast cancer. So we are trying to do a lot right now with the survey, like I said, so we're definitely talking to more students. Uh, we talked to the presidents when we came to you last meeting, so now we're trying to reach, reach more students and get everyone's input. So we're hoping that survey will do it, and we can go through all of that and see what, see what the students want.
So, um, like Dr. Landau touched on, we started the, uh, after-school tutoring program. So, me and a couple other NHS students, actually Daisy too, um, we were after-school today and just tutoring kids who came in, and we actually had a pretty good turnout. Um, so that was nice to have. Um, I believe last Friday, there was a dodgeball tournament. Um, it was promoted kind of by PBIS, so Miss Sims and I believe Mr. Frato and, uh, a bunch of other teachers kind of like put it together. Students had a lot of fun there. And about the survey, yeah, we're, it's getting off the ground. I think we're really trying to, uh, collect more information, especially on like, uh, type of languages we wanna see too. Um, and yeah, so we're working on it.
Thank you guys for the hard work. Good job bringing it out as well. Craig?
So, uh, today, uh, believe it or not, we finally got a tour of the bus garage. Um, those of you who have been following this saga for well over a year, I think, um, remember the origins of it, and we finally managed to get it out on the schedule and get it done. Um, it was very interesting. Um, and, uh, Mr. Mackey, Ron Mackey, who's the supervisor of that department, gave us the coach tour of the bus storage garage, the fuel farm and pumping stations and the maintenance garage. And, uh, we are the proud owners of a fairly substantial transportation company known as the Bus Department colloquially, and it's, uh, uh, I think the big takeaway I had was that they would really like to have a, uh, their own power supply there for emergencies because a lot of things don't operate when the power goes down, which is usually during some kind of a big storm, which is probably the most likely case where there may need to be some unscheduled bus runs, like take kids home before the big storm hits or. So, they're concerned about the loss of electrical power that has, has occurred at times and could occur at the worst possible time, and things like garage doors don't open properly, computers don't work, and some things that need to work don't. Um, so, um, I think that'll be coming up on our agenda for our next capital program. We already did talk about it, but weren't able to include it in the one that we're doing, uh, sooner. Uh, we also, uh, Mr. Rapkowski and myself, along with, uh, our tour guide, uh, Mrs. Corderoni and, uh, Mr. Gromato, their superintendent of buildings and grounds, uh, we did visit the Glenham School and had a tour there. Uh, so, uh, we continue our, our tours of our facilities so we know what it is we got and get some ideas of what it looks like due to some of the improvements or changes that have been considered. Uh, at Glenham, uh, there is a big improvement in what are referred to as the cubbies. That's where the kids hang their coats and hats and stuff. And, uh, the new facilities in that area are looking very nice. So, uh, several of us went down to the New York State School Boards Association Annual Convention in the Big Apple. Um, we pretty much had to hike through Times Square a number of times. I almost collided with a naked cowboy once. New York is fun, uh, except when it's raining. Um, the convention I thought was quite useful. Uh, I don't wanna go into all the details of what I learned and do this at home, but I've started to write it up so I don't forget at all. Uh, some of the things that I particularly remember was these seminars on school security and, uh, also some of the programs that they had that related to, uh, capital projects, including pitfalls of what happens when you do a capital program. It's sort of the dark side of capital programs. I can talk a little bit more about that when we meet, uh, Wednesday, if you have a few moments. Um, so, uh, the other committee among the public relations advocacy and legislative, we're gonna be Wednesday at eight fifteen after facilities and operations, taking a look at, uh, our website, and we'll, uh, also take a look at the result of elections and find out who we'll be working with, uh, in the state legislature, et cetera, after the smoke clears. Um, and I think we also want to look at the, the NISBA docket, the adopted long list of position statements, which takes a few minutes to read, but, um, I'd like to talk with Anthony, who's our delegate, a bit about that. And then, um, we had renewed interest in the subject of cameras on, uh, bus, buses, the stop arms that go out. Um, there was legislation proposed last year that got through one house, but that was as far as it went. Um, and I appreciate Mr. Singh doing some of the late work, reminding us of the, uh, presentation Mr. Mackey gave, uh, back in the last budget cycle. We reviewed that and, uh, I told him tonight, well, once we know who we're talking to and we see where that legislation starts to reemerge again, we would like to take that up and talk about that. Um, also I see that, uh, on the agenda tonight, we have a stipend position for Arts and Education Coordinator, which is a good thing to see. I assume we're going forward with that with our agenda later. And that'll be, uh, nice. I hope we get it filled and, uh, can put somebody specifically to work on that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, so I first want to, to thank Daisy for her presentation and Annie, switching things. Wow. It's really, it's really, uh, this is really exciting. Um, just as an educator myself, um, I'm very politically engaged, involved in activism. It's so inspiring to see how people like really, uh, owning your power and organizing. Um, don't imagine you're old enough to vote yet, but, uh, I mean, you're, you're preparing to, to engage in, uh, in civics in a very, uh, material way. It was awesome. Uh, so thank you for doing that and best of luck organizing that. Um, I also went down to the NISBA conference last week. Um, I had very mixed feelings about it. It was very, it was exciting. In some ways, it was very, um, positive in that being a new board member, it kind of like really like galvanized the sense of like, alright, like, board member, like I'm, you know, like you got the lanyard. Um, it goes well with my name. Um, I found some of the, the seminars to be informative. Um, I enjoyed talking to the vendors, uh, these kinds of things. But I have to say the most possibly, and the most productive moment for me was not, not directly related to the, the convention. It wasn't a formal meeting, but was actually just having a nice dinner with men of board members. We didn't talk business. We just spent time getting to know each other. Felt really productive. Uh, I'd like to suggest at some point maybe we organize that into our board schedule. We don't already. Um, my mixed feelings were a little bit of, uh, the fiscal side when I saw the sticker shock of like how much we're, we're spending to go down there. And then I just do the math of how many districts are sending board members down there, and you're like, oh my, you start really adding it up, and you're like, wow, this incredible amount of money coming out of the state's education budget to send people down to these. Uh, I'm not criticizing it, but it's just sort of the realistic, uh, aspect. This convention's cost an incredible amount of money. I tried to look on NISBA site, see if there's any transparency. I couldn't find any. Um, so that's just something that crossed my mind in terms of maybe thinking about whether or not I attend the next one, is sort of thinking about is the, the value exchange worth it for me. Uh, but overall, it was a very interesting experience. Um, I wanted to make a brief, uh, announcement. I, I have worked with DIA, uh, their education department professionally, myself, uh, as well as my children. My kid's gone through the third grade arts program. Um, the art education director reached out to me and informed me about a new program they have. It's a second Saturday art studio for children aged five and up. It's free. It's from ten thirty to twelve. Um, and the next one's coming up is next Saturday. It seems like a pretty cool program. It's free. I know a lot of members of the community don't regularly go to DIA. Um, it's a great opportunity to kind of just get in there with no, no expectation. Just watch your kid. They'll make smart. Should be fun. Um, our committee report, we had a policy committee meeting, as we already mentioned. Um, we are going through our outdated policies and bringing them up to NISBA standards. We are, um, working through the four thousands policies, many of which we have pushed through to first read coming up today, um, mostly regarding around special education services. Um, we adopted most of these, uh, directly to the NISBA recommendations. To be full disclosure, it was, as a, as a board member, I'm not an expert on the special education language, so I took the, the recommendations largely from Cecilia, um, and from NISBA and putting some faith into that. So maybe you are more experts, uh, have more expertise in these as you recruit them, you can, you can review them yourself. We also brought back the, the previous board, the previous policy committee meeting. We had reviewed the policy for homeschool involvement in extracurricular. We had tabled that to conduct research, um, which involved myself. I emailed several board members, the president of the board, the superintendent from neighboring districts that do and have allowed homeschool access. Uh, Anthony made a spreadsheet sort of detailing all of the, the districts that do. Um, I spoke with Matt informally, asking a few specific targeted questions about what we think, uh, effects may be. Um, based on assembling all of that information, we largely decided that it appears to be that the logistical concerns are not as wavy as maybe more philosophical concerns. So we, uh, we approved a revision in the policy committee, and that was Anthony Singh, Alyssa and myself. Uh, we approved a revision allowing access to bring to discussion first read, discussion if you choose. Um, and so we have that on the agenda this night. Definitely.
Take, take policy meeting?
Um, I don't have the date in front of me. Um, I've looked at it. The month for the last one, so. If you give it a second. The fifth. So that's what it's, the twenty-fourth, is that right?
Yeah.
The last one?
Mm-hmm.
So our next one will be, uh, the twenty-first of November. I have the date for Thanksgiving. We shouldn't do a date for Thanksgiving.
Bring it back.
Okay. Should we do a week after that? February twenty-eighth? Does that work for you? So we'll do November twenty-eighth.
At seven?
Uh, we do eight fifteen.
Well.
We usually do eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Oh, sorry. Um, I'd like to thank Anthony Singh for bringing that previous discussion to the agenda today. Um, I am still trepidatious and cautious about the right way to bring concerns and issues and just my general thoughts to the board for discussion. And now I'm nearly done with my board training, so I've learned a lot about how it's done. So a question that I have is, do we have a policy for making policy? And do we have a policy for how to bring concerns and questions and issues to the board for discussion? Is there a protocol for how to do that? Aside from Anthony, I know you've mentioned a few times about it has to come up in public comment or it has to come up in board discussion, but I'm interested to see like, what is the protocol so that I do it right?
So, through this email debacle that was happening and, and stuff, I planned a second executive session to, as a board retreat to discuss about board communication piece. So I hope to clear that up.
Okay.
Tonight?
Thanks.
Good?
No other comments?
Mike?
Okay, for the, um, the facility, a person facility committee meeting Wednesday night at seven. Okay. Uh, thank you, Craig, explaining that we did our, our tours of the bus garage in Glenham today. And, um, I was actually happy when we came here to see the Deacon players were using the theater again. So that was, you know, great job by the team in order to get that, uh, back in shape and back open. Um, do have a question. I'll, I'll just put it out there for Emory, of course. Uh, reminding her that as we open the budget calendar, really interested to understand how we, at the board, can have some input or, or decision-making, but input about what, yeah, here is the list. We have our budget, here's kind of the list of the new stuff or initiatives and put in our weight as to what we may be interested in above other things, you know? So, we'd like to have that, cause usually things are just kind of given to us, and we're like, okay, what do we do with that? But sometimes we may be having, have a discussion about some alternatives and plus and minuses of those alternatives.
And a strategic plan should be done by then, so that will help.
And that's what I'm, I'm looking forward to as well. Um, I did, speaking of that, I did go on the thought exchange, so one of those ideas, I had a few minutes. I went in there, it's real quick and easy to get in there and put a, put some ideas in. So I would encourage you all to do it. I want to go back in and add some more ideas and do some ratings, so. Uh, it was, it was very good. I really, I'm glad you're going through that. What else? Nope, that's all I had?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Or actually, I did have one comment. Um, it was great, uh, her hearing that the Honor Society is, was doing tutoring, and, um, so that's a, that's a great resource for, you know, supporting and helping it even maybe in after-school uh, type of, of, of things. So, there's a lot of great resources that we can maybe, uh, pull together to help resolve some of these challenges, so. So I appreciate you mentioning that.
Anthony? Good evening. Um, like, uh, give kudos to the Bob presentation. It was definitely its namesake. And, um, um, and I think it's important that we do hear from students. Um, you know, I do thank Emmy and Noah for their participation here. You know, it's important we hear from students, cause it's, it is all about the students, uh, what we do here. Um, I didn't participate in a thought exchange yet because it required another, um, required to create an account and a password, and I've got too many passwords to remember.
You don't, you don't have to.
I don't need to do that.
Oh, didn't I do?
I just went on there.
Just bypassed it.
Then I did something wrong. Okay.
Well, there's an option. I think you could, or you just say, just go do it.
Yeah.
And that's what I said.
Alright, well, I'm, I'm, alright, thank you. No, I'm glad I brought my, my personal.
Well, it's good for everybody to hear that too.
Yep.
Doesn't have to be that way. Okay. Um, I also, um, I had a note from the, um, I was talking to the, uh, I also, I had a note from the, I was talking to the commissioner of the Dutchess County Department of Emergency Response, and they're having an autism for first responders training, and he had mentioned that it was open to, to school folks as well. Just, you know, he suggested perhaps to school security folks, so I circulated that information to, to everyone here. You know, FYI only, you know, feel free to circulate if you so please. And we have a diversity committee coming up on November eighth. Flo is not gonna make it. And Anthony, you're gonna make that one or no?
No.
So, I don't have quorum, I guess.
Correct.
So, is that grounds for rescheduling, or do I have it anyway, or how does that work?
To have a committee meeting in the quorum.
Okay, all right, so then I'll work to reschedule the eighth. And maybe after Thanksgiving, I guess. Okay, or maybe combine, yeah, November, December together or something like that.
We'll do the next week, does that not work?
I'm gonna be in Washington DC.
So, it never works.
Yep. Thanks.
All right.
Chris?
The only thing that I have to report is, well, we're having a sustainability meeting, the district is, Matt sent it out in his blog, on Tuesday, November twenty-seventh, four to five fifteen. So, if you're interested in that topic or those issues, please attend. NISBA, yeah, I think we could have kind of a broader discussion about how we engage with it going forward in terms of cost savings, because I think there's something worthwhile to discuss about that. But I, with, you know, the things that you guys have been sharing in mind, which is so great about having it here and having this process start to work, it's taken about a year to get everything through, up and running, like you said. There was a club called Virtual Entreprises, Junior Ventures, and it's a career academy. It's probably a program that we have to pay for, but it, I kind of went through the whole thing with the kids with the, with, you know, the fact that you had said that a lot of the feedback you were getting was about business, sort of options for clubs or curriculum as well. And I, and I think what Mr. Keely talked about tonight was so great for that, the help desk, it sounds like it fits right under that as well. But I brought the brochure back for you, something to take a look at, maybe we can explore other things like this.
Chris, I have a question for you. Do you remember Junior Achievement?
Yeah.
Is that still around?
I don't know. We had Young Business, something in America, yeah.
Weird.
I didn't, I mean.
You didn't search, I don't know.
I know the commercial for that.
I, let's see. So, I was very excited about all the new clubs, I think that is really great. I am also excited to see the Arts in Ed coordinator position on the agenda, that's something that the Arts in Ed Foundation has asked for for a long time. And I think that it is a missing piece in terms of really taking advantage of the community work there and bringing the teachers together, so that we can make that all work much more swiftly. So, I'm really excited about that. Also, really excited about this after-school snacks and tutoring program, I think that's just wonderful. My son went today, said it was awesome.
Is that true?
I did not go to the Dutchess County School Board Association meeting last week. I, I decided instead to go to the Beacon One event, which was an anti-racism and anti-Semitism coming together of the community at the Salem Tabernacle Church.
Yeah.
And it was really great, it was such a, it was a very diverse crowd, everyone was there to support each other. It had actually been planned before the Pittsburgh shooting, which was really interesting. But perfect timing for everyone to just come together and remember why, why we're in this world. So, I'm very grateful to everyone who organized that. I also attended NISBA and had similarly mixed feelings, I think there was a lot there, but many of the workshops I tried to attend were actually full. And so, maybe next year we look at what's on the agenda and sort of pool our resources a little bit. And last, I just wanted to talk up the strategic plan a little bit. We had our first meeting last, was that last week or?
Two weeks.
Two weeks ago. And Jonathan Costa, who made a presentation to the board, went through a slightly longer presentation about what we're gonna do. And it, it was really exciting, it really felt like this pivotal moment for our district. I think that he, he's onto something that, just the way that we are teaching is antiquated in a lot of ways. It has not caught up with, with these things and just the way our world has changed and, and the types of careers that we're supposed to be preparing our kids for. We don't even know what those careers are anymore. And so, in a way, that's sort of a blessing, because we have to go back to this foundation of like, what, what do we want a student to leave here with? What kind of thinking skills, what kind of communication skills? And I, I'll share my aha moment, which happened slightly before the planning meeting, but fit right in with it. I asked my children last year for my birthday to memorize the state capitals, because that's what I had done when I was a kid. And they weren't doing it in school, and I was like, what, what's going on here? What kind of education is this? And, and they were so not interested, and I didn't get it for my birthday. And I finally understand why, you know, why, why would they need to? It's right here. But what Jonathan, I told Jonathan Costa this, because I, I, you know, I thought it was so funny. And, and he said, exactly, but wouldn't it be great to, you know, ask the question, why is Albany the capital of New York? How did it become that way? Why isn't Beacon the capital? And really, you know, these, these things are, it's a much deeper investigation at that point, and one you'll probably remember longer, although I still do know most of them. But I think we can't put enough weight on this process. I think it is really important, it is, it's really gonna affect the way that we plan our budget. And I looked at Thought Exchange, it is super easy use, please, everyone use it. And, and it was actually interesting to see that a lot of things that people were saying aligned already with our goals. So, the question is, how do we make that happen? And I think that this year we really wanna think deeply and broadly about how we want to make those things happen. And it is, it is, this is a big ask, this is a, you know, a heavy lift, I think. The teachers that we, I've spoken to at their curriculum meeting, they are really excited about this. They are unprepared for this. This is not how teachers have been taught to teach. So, anyone who's been teaching for a while is not gonna have these skills. And there's, there's nothing wrong with that, but we need to help them to catch up there. And I think that they're very excited for, for that process as well. That's, I don't, hey Eric, do you know when the next curriculum meeting is?
The twentieth.
November twentieth? Okay, next curriculum meeting is November twentieth.
Meredith, you reminded me, I'd like to thank Matt actually for also going to the One Beacon event. I mean, it was definitely very home and it was very needed for the community.
And then Salem Tabernacle has the video on their website, if you weren't able to attend.
So, I'm just gonna piggyback off of the strategic planning that Meredith mentioned. My aha moment was when Jonathan, Jonathan Costa was talking, and he turns to Meredith and myself and say, so, what does the board talk about, what does the board think about student achievement? And the blank face came out from Meredith and myself, and we answered candidly and said, we haven't discussed student achievement in four years. Five years. So, it was depressing that that was a response that we had to say to a strategic committee. And I hope it was a goal last year, a personal goal of mine, that we start talking about student achievement. And I hope that we get there. Because I really think the strategic plan will help us with that, and I'm hoping that our goals will help us get there as well. Because the ultimate goal of this board is to talk about student achievement and how to increase it, to get students to be productive members of society, to do what they wanna do and that they can make a living with. I also attended a NISBA convention, this is my third one. I could say this was the worst NISBA convention that I attended. You would think that the offerings would be grander and that the facilities would be larger to accommodate, but it was the opposite. The, the rooms were smaller, they shut you out from sessions. And the sessions, I, I mean, I got to sessions fifteen, twenty minutes early, I'm always early. And there was, you weren't allowed to stand in a room, if you didn't have a seat, you had to get out of the room, because there are fire codes. So, it was disappointing that up in Buffalo, the rooms were accommodating and that you weren't bured out from sessions that you wanted to attend. In Lake Placid, smaller Lake Placid accommodated all the members and so forth. I think that what happens is, is when it's in New York City, a lot more people tend to come. They didn't have as many offerings, breakout sessions, as they had when it was in Lake Placid and Buffalo. And it was disappointing to, to see the breakout sessions be full, not as many offers, offerings. The highlights were obviously the commissioner speaking, and it was no surprise, she had to adjust, we had to adjust the agenda for it, because she had to go to another meeting, which has happened a lot with my workshops that I've been to with the commissioner, that she's in a rush to go out elsewhere, and it was limited questions that could be asked. And not that there was a big line for questions, she did address the major topics in education, which was good. She doesn't shy away from these conversation. One is about the moratorium for the decoupling of the APPR for, for the teachers. And, and that's something that she hits head on. She talked about the state assessments, three, three state of test assessments, which was nice to hear that they're making adjustments, but I just don't know if the adjustments are there. I, and the nicest part about the state assessments are that teachers are creating the assessments instead of an outside agency. So, it used to be Pearson, and now teachers are going to Albany and creating the questions and stuff. So, that's, that's a nice change, having teachers create the assessment for the students. But it was definitely not the best one of the three, and that was disappointing piece, so. All right, so, we're gonna move to the consent agenda. So, the consent, the use of the consent agenda, Minister of Education, make more effective use of time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Is there any items on the consent agenda that board members would like called?
Eleven ten.
Eleven ten.
Eleven point oh four.
Eleven point oh four.
Eleven point one five.
Eleven point one five. And I wanna pull eleven point oh three C four.
And eleven point oh seven.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda minus eleven point oh three C four, eleven ten, eleven oh four, eleven one five, and eleven oh seven.
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, A.O. I need a motion for eleven point oh three C four.
Motion.
Second.
Mike? Comments or questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I'm abstaining.
Oh, okay, I see. Oh, I know, okay.
I need a motion for eleven point oh four.
Some of, second.
Comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a question that Matt and Emory could explain, just, there's a lot of stipends on here. So, if they could explain the stipends and some of the differences in stipends in section CED, and then all the stipends and, you know, related to the, to the professional development, just so we all understand.
Sure.
Just walking through, we, we have two new clubs that we're appointing. One is multicultural club, the other one is the Girls Who Code Club. The multicultural club is at a higher rate, it's, it's, there's different groups in the BTA contract for clubs. It's primarily group one, group two, group three. And multicultural club is kind of a slightly different wording of the, I think it's, in the contract, it's called Cultural Awareness Club. That's a group three club. It's been several years before that's ever been at the high school, so Minnesota wanted to revive that. Our new Spanish teacher was interested in doing that. So, you know, if a group is at a higher, excuse me, if a club is at a higher group, then there's high expectations to be meeting more often, you know, that kind of thing. So, we'll, we at Minnesota will be making sure that that club is meeting at a higher rate than a group, than a group two or group one club. Group two clubs kind of, I, I'm doing kind of a rough version, but they essentially meet once a week, is, is kind of the general understanding, and typically have anywhere from, you know, I don't know, ten, fifteen to twenty-five kids, I think. Girls Who Code Club is a brand-new club, so when it was presented, or when we presented it to the Beacon Teachers Association, we kind of quickly assessed that it fell in line with all the other group two clubs that was in the contract, so that kind of explains that. For the yearbook advisors, the, their co-advisors are being paid two different rates, because one has been doing it for longer. And in the BTA contract, if you've been doing a club, you, I'm gonna get the language wrong, but you get a, you get an increase. It's almost like a step sort of thing. Moving ahead to the, we have several teachers that are leading staff development tomorrow in the, on the Professional Learning Day. And so, they are being appointed for time in the BTA contract, a teacher who leaves in service. Even if it's during like a, a workday for teachers, they get paid to do that. They don't get paid to do any prep work, so the payment is just for like the amount of time that they're leading a session. And so, that is for forty dollars an hour, with a maximum of two hundred and forty dollars a day. We don't really have anyone who does like a full day, it's usually just for an hour or two. And then the last, one of the last things that's been mentioned already is the Arts in Ed Coordinator. This has been something that's, that's brought to me pretty much since I arrived in Deacon, a year and some change ago. So, this is, I mean, Eric has been doing some of this in his two different roles in the past year and a half, at least with me. But I think it'd be best described as sort of either a hodgepodge of people kind of doing some of this stuff, or nobody doing it. And so, we really feel like this person, we're obviously gonna really work on getting a good person to do this stipend, but this person will really help be like the liaison both with BOSIs, with individual schools, with individual classroom teachers, with grant opportunities, with artists, with the Beacon Arts and Education Foundation. Like this person will sort of be the, the hub for that and make, make things happen at a quicker rate, excuse me, like make things happen more quickly for our students and in our, you know, for programs in our schools. And also to support the existing programs that are happening. One of the big things that's supported is the Calico Ball, and that is something that, you know, this person would be doing a lot of sort of, I'm gonna say, I don't know the right word, but a lot of the kind of like organization on our side, there's a lot of outside organization for that from the folks who run Beacon Arts and Education Foundation. But this person would be our contact person. So, some of this is things that I've been working on or thinking about for my time here. Others are coming from like our new high school principal. You know, some of the new things, including this Arts and Education, Arts and Education Coordinator involves an MOA with the Beacon Teachers Association. So, I don't think negotiation is the right word, but it's something that we do sit down with BTA and try to mutually agree upon something to bring to the board. So, that is kind of in a nutshell, we have several new things happening tonight, and that's a sort of the quick version.
Yeah, no, I think it's good to, you know, see that things are happening, the extent that things are happening. And, and maybe if people are questioning the differences between some of these things.
No, these are great questions.
For the Beacon Arts and Education, is this, so, my question there, which is eleven point one five as well, but it's, it's called a position, but it's actually, you have, we're not hiring somebody to do it, we're having somebody who's going to take on some of those additional responsibilities for that stipend and out. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, this would be directed towards a teacher for a stipend. You know, we have been going with more stipends this year. I, I am coming from a district that tended to just add positions to do some of this work. Stipends is, and I know some people look at them differently, but I think it's sometimes a more efficient way to, to. Uh, stipends is, and I know some people look at them differently, but I think it's sometimes a more efficient way to, to, to kind of uh. Deal with an issue in a district or provide some leadership. I also uh, have a long track record in anywhere I've been, either as a principal, central ops administrator, now superintendent, trying to promote teacher leadership. And I think um, this, the Strategic Planning Committee, which is just a one-year thing. The uh, equity teams in the buildings, like we're trying to promote, uh, really, you know, there's teachers with outstanding ideas and experiences in our district and we're trying to. Promote that and, and also get some uh. You know, some people who maybe haven't always done this kind of stuff to step up and, and, and put their hat in the, what is it? Hat in the ring? It's getting late.
Yeah.
I'm gonna stop talking, but anyway, that, that uh, that's just a brief explanation for this, I appreciate the question.
Appreciate it. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, A O. Any motion for eleven point one five?
Motion for eleven point one five.
Second?
Second.
And that answered my question about the, the stipend for that position, it's a Beacon Arts and Education.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, A O. Any motion for eleven point oh seven?
Motion.
Second.
My comment here is that the treasurer report on the budget transfers can, contains a lot of fairly large items. Some of which were not described in a manner that naval beat to have any idea what they were about. Sometime ago, we adopted a policy and then sort of debated it afterwards. That said that uh, if we had a transfer of over five thousand dollars, the board should approve it. Well, actually, we approve everything through this means, so I would suggest maybe we need to revisit that policy. And see if it still makes sense. I think the upshot of it was that we couldn't really do it all the time in advance, wasn't practical. But I think there is some, something to be said for clarity in, in those reports, so I just wanted to make that comment. It wasn't very clear to me what, whatever the treasurer's talking about there. There's some seriously large numbers of budget transfers that are described in a way that doesn't let me know what they actually mean. So, that's my comment.
Do you know the policy specifically?
I don't remember the number of it, they all have numbers, four-digit numbers.
It is, there is a policy um, that the board does approve. This report is generated off the vision, which is why if you're seeing everything above five thousand, we don't have to give it to you, but it's just a computer-generated report. Um, I'm looking at, at uh, the front page, most of them are re-class adjustments and how you know that is if you look at the first four numbers, that's the area, so it's. It's within the area, so um, some of them are breaking them out, they were creating um, another code. Um, we're trying to be a little bit better about, it will help in the budget process to, to kind of blow out some of the codes, make them a little bit more specific. Um, and most of those on the top, so I mean, if you had questions ahead of time and asked me, I could give you specifics, but that's kind of what I'm looking at, you know, kind of going forward. Some of the things in the bigger area at the bottom, I can see a re-class, we had uh, more salary allocated to elementary. Teacher salaries as opposed to secondary, and so they're just transfers between two different um, salary codes within the same area.
Different codes because even though they're teachers, they're just a.
Right, cause, because all of these codes need to get reported on the S T three at the end of the year after the audit is done. Um, and they have to be specific and they're actually gonna get a little bit more detailed going forward, where we may have to do some accounting per building level. So you may see a little bit more of that as well.
James, answer your question, and then, and then the new policies is six, one, five, zero.
Thank you.
I mean, just updated that not too long ago.
Yeah, April twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen is an adoption date on that E code.
Any other comments for eleven point seven? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, A O. I need a motion for eleven point one O.
Motion.
Second.
Give a second.
So I, I wanna make a motion, given the time and that we have a second exec, um, that we limit this discussion, it's a first read, that we limit the discussion to twenty minutes.
So I, some comments on the policy.
Hold on one second.
Oh, okay, so.
So there's a motion to, there's a first and second for eleven point one O. Then there was a motion, Meredith made a motion to limit discussion to twenty minutes.
Second.
Is there a second, James, second? Comments or questions about um, the motion to have the um, eleven point one O be twenty minutes long?
If you're gonna keep the twenty minutes long, what would be the parliamentary procedure we follow to make sure everybody has a equal chance to make a say on it?
Based on the motion, I would say that Meredith is just trying to be um, conscious of the time and that if everyone knows beforehand that we're trying to limit it to twenty minutes, that people would be able to. Look to adhere to that and have their comments be in that timeframe. I think that was the, I don't wanna speak to Meredith, but.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would think the twenty minutes would be long enough for everyone to make their comments about it and then we vote on it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Nay, sorry.
Seven, one, to keep it to twenty minutes. So there is discussion open for eleven point one O, um, which is the homeschool policy.
So I wanted to, I know Meredith called it, but we probably called it, had she not. Uh, I wanted to kind of pull back on this policy a little bit and give some background to the first time it came up. So last year, the board was approached to address this policy, it, it kind of uh, for lack of a better word, blew up around, there was a student who was volunteering, you know. Participating with Beacon Players, then they were given this message that they weren't allowed to because they're a homeschool student. And um, students, community members, members of homeschool community got very upset and we received um, communication and a petition from students. Uh, and basically what came to light was sort of twofold. One was this issue with this um, this one girl and who, whose brother previously had um, tried out for um, soccer, the soccer team, I think at Rombaut. And made the team and then was told that it was against the law that he made the team, so it seemed to be kind of a. The one, one part of the issue was just this sort of like, it had, the policy, there wasn't a clear policy, it hadn't been followed, nobody really knew what was going on. And then the other part of it was um, this sort of kid who was kind of caught up in this situation and what we were gonna do about that. So the first way we addressed the um, child was uh, Matt wrote up a sort of volunteer agreement where anybody, community members. Uh, because Beacon Players is a sort of quasi-community and school group, anybody who could volunteer and participate with creating, the experience of creating one of those productions. And uh, she participated. Then we decided to really look at the homeschool policy to, once and for all, make sure we had a very clear under policy written. And that we would communicate that policy sort of clearly and consistently across the district. With reference to reviewing that policy, I think a few of us experienced an evolution of thinking. The way that it was brought to us and was very much framed by the um, community that was bringing it to us was, and it was guided by their perspective. They wanted to participate with, with, in extracurriculars. I think a lot of us thought, well, this is no big deal, um, or at least several of us, and then once we started to um, dive into it as board members, and I'll speak for myself here. Learning more about our responsibilities, our priorities, and how interconnected um, they are to funding and um. And the enroll, and how we were really trying to focus on the enrolled student experience, which I think we're kind of seeing finally start the wheels. I think tonight is a great example of those wheels actually finally turning, I mean, the fact that we had a student come and present a group, that we have all these um, clubs on the agenda. It was, I, I feel like something's coming to life, and so when, when we started, our, our sort of fitting it into the bigger framework of our roles as, our board role. Was that we've been trying to bring stability to the district and put the right pieces in place so that, to improve the, the experience of um. Of the students who have been in our buildings for um, many years. And that we looked at this policy as not something to simply create for the immediate moment, but it was part of planning for what is to come based on our understanding of where we are. Um, but what became clear to me when we were faced with the argument that we heard many, many times was, this is not a large number of students and it won't have any impact on the enrolled students was. How little we know or understand about our enrolled students. Um, we don't really know if we are meeting all of their needs in terms of what we are offering. There are barriers to participation, what we can do to eliminate them and to wave away and say that bringing, focusing on these students, these other students won't impact them at all felt very wrong to me. And um, and now we're only just now hearing from them, our student board representatives have been in place for the year and they have said, they themselves have said they're finally starting to see that. Students are understanding that they're here to advocate for them. So um, I said last year, once we had a better understanding and a plan to address our own, you know, our own house, in the sense, we could reconsider the homeschool policy. However, we are revisiting this policy before any of the work, the strategic plan, the student roundtables with that, our budget process, the new administrators have been in place. I attended the policy meeting to learn what members of the community had to say and almost all were the same things we heard last year. Many of them described their choice to homeschool as one that worked for them as a family and something they feel good about. This is consistent with data that I've found from the National Center of Educational Statistics, which cites consistently the top three motivators for homeschooling as. Lack of satisfaction with the school environment, preferring the home environment and individual, individualized instruction. Lack of satisfaction with academic offerings and a desire to provide moral instruction. Um, I feel like these are very personal choices and similarly to private school, they happen on a personal level. And I don't really understand why we continue to give this such high priority. Yes, these are students in our district and yes, we should think about them and we do. We have staff dedicated to reviewing their I H I P, their I H I F I P, quarterly reports, test scores, and meeting special educational needs. However, we are a district that has had to make hard choices. For example, last year, we had to choose between offering a second world language and increasing class size. We had heard from many people they wanted the second world language, that only became possible through pursuing a grant. Our enrolled students are part of a formula that factors into our state aid, which presently is at forty-nine percent of our funding as a district. This is not to say that it comes down to money, it also comes down to time and attention and we have given this a lot of time and, we gave this a lot of time and attention last year. We made a decision and now we are spending time and attention on it again. Because I believe people who are generally satisfied with their choices are not satisfied with one part of it, which is their right. However, as I look through the supporting information provided by the committee, there are several things that stand out to me. We received a database that Anthony put together, um, and that was thirty schools at districts out of a pos, at, at a total of seven hundred thirty or so in New York State, which is less than five percent. Um, and that's not even accurate because it doesn't even, not all schools do all three things, all schools do intramurals, clubs, and materials lending. Um, many of these districts that are on this database are incredibly wealthy districts, they're well-funded and they do not rely on state aid. They certainly are not waiting for state aid to make their budget decisions for key programs until they hear back from the state. That is a situation we find ourselves in every year, we literally wait, we do two budgets practically. Um, two of the districts we received communication from, Locust Valley, I looked it up, the New York Times describes this as a quiet bird with great schools and elite private clubs. Locust Valley, like others, another school district on the database, Portchester, offers, offers an international baccalaureate program. This is a prestigious two-year curriculum recognized by elite universities, not just in the United States, around the world, it's an even bigger commitment than A P. Their high school newspaper, The Spectrum, has received many prestigious scholastic journalists in the world. And as a district, they are number six in your state, number five in the country. These numbers may be a couple of years old, so, but you get the picture. South Orange Town, another very highly rated school district, literally located in a very wealthy area. Po Kentico Hills, also on this list, is a district adjacent to the Rockland Federal Estate. They have a living science lab and an apple orchard on the estate and students choose between French and Spanish starting in second grade. Rhine, also similar. Nyack, very wealthy. And then as we move on to looking at the, a lot of the other schools, they are very rural schools and small, so. For them, they're, they might be facing schools, students that make a homeschool choice simply because of geography. But again, I think something I've heard Mike say for years is that we have to have a five-year plan, we have to see, you know, we have to do like what we. Do a lot of work to get there and we are just beginning to put the bigger pieces in place. And I think we need to finish that work before we take a great deal of time and effort revisiting the same policy over giving that much-needed time and attention to our larger responsibility.
I'd like to move to extending the time beyond twenty minutes.
Yeah, I'd like to note that I, I wanna hear everyone's opinion and I do wanna hear Kristen's opinion.
Hold up, there was a motion to extend it beyond twenty minutes, is there a second?
Second. Hello. Maybe, maybe nine minutes.
Eight times nine minutes? Seven times nine minutes?
How many minutes did we just use? Nine minutes.
Right, we started at ten nineteen.
You guys provided a lot of supporting material and I've looked through it all.
By how much longer, James?
Nine times nine.
I don't need nine minutes.
Well, we, till we get to the end of the twenty minutes and then that's my discussion part. You know, and, and then we can see if we wanna continue at that point.
I think we just eliminate the, the limit altogether and we can just do it the way we used to do it.
There was a motion to have it and it was approved by seven to one, so James is making a motion to extend it and there was a second, so the discussion is, and I. I'm not keeping the time going as we're making, discussing the motion. So, the clarifier was by how much longer and James is saying sixty-three minutes?
And my comment is we should just.
Or open. Or, oh, put no, extend it to no cap.
So is your motion now to not have the timeframe? And Anthony, you're seconding that?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstain.
Roll call?
Is better bid?
Nay.
Mister Caslayo?
Yes.
Miss Flynn?
Abstain.
Mister Akowski?
Nay.
Mister Singh?
Yes, and it's been a while since we met, it's midnight, so.
Mister Wolf?
Nay.
Miss Hewer? Mister Wade?
Nay.
So the motion was denied, so we're, we're still at the twenty minute piece.
Can, can I just ask that the remaining time be moderated?
The, most, so we'll go on with the time, obviously, try and be conscientious, I don't know if everyone has, wants to chime in or not, but if you have something that you wanna discuss. Remember, discussion is not a, a debate or to persuade, it's stating your opinion as to how you feel on a thing, so people know where you're coming from when you vote, so.
I'll speak to this. This came up uh, before I was even elected, right? Um, during the debate, uh, for all the candidates, this question was proposed to all the candidates, including the three who were elected. Uh, we were asked on the spot what our feelings were about including, uh, homeschool students have access, we all agreed that it seemed like we should. To me, my opinion has not changed on that. Uh, this is a question of inclusion and why do we, why do we allow some students and why do we not? How do we draw the line as a board of defining who constitutes a student under our responsibility and who does not? Right, so we have a responsibility to define the individual home instruction plan, just like we have a responsibility to define the curriculum, right? We have.
We do have the responsibility to.
But that's a district, the district.
I know, no, that's.
No, we know.
We have to get approved.
Be approved.
That's the responsibility of the parent, we, it gets reviewed, I mean, the whole process, right? We don't.
I think James' point is that we have to review it regardless of they participate in homeschool.
However, the act, information needs to be accurate and I think.
Right, well, that's, well, that's fine. My point is, is that we're responsible for making sure that that is enacted, right? What, what are we responsible for?
For making sure that the, their home instruction plan is enacted. Like there's, there are, there are specific criteria that those have to meet. So I will clarify, just because I have some experience with, I have plans that the district is uh, required to collect and to approve and to check on regularly. How much time a district puts into that is up to the district.
Right.
But there needs to be some type of documentation.
Right.
Okay.
We have a similar responsibility towards managing the curriculum for our enrolled students, right? We also offer extended the extracurricular programs, clubs, sports, as an addition to our core responsibility. I see no reason why we would create a division to say that our uh, homeschool students do not also deserve uh, the same access, to be honest. I think we make a lot of, a lot of assumptions about why a family chooses. I think we make a lot of assumptions about why a family chooses to, to homeschool their child. I questioned the source that Kristen brings up, she talks about the top three reasons, being wanting a better education. I have my own sources we looked at, or that was one of them, was one of the top five reasons why families choose to homeschool is seeking, they believe they can get a better education doing themselves. The other reasons were because their student does not have, has special learning needs that cannot be met in the program, in the enrolled program, because they have social or emotional issues that cannot be addressed, because they are bullied, which oftentimes is a result of students who have identities that are marginalized and not supported in the community. I have my own experience with this, as I've mentioned before, is in my own family, my niece is a homeschool. This created incredible tension throughout my family, and I have family educators, public school educators, who were adamantly against this decision, right? They, they could not understand why my sister would choose to homeschool her child, right? My niece is transgender. There are no accommodations in her district to, to facilitate her to be there without, there's no space, no training for the teachers, no accommodations to go to the bathroom, no lockers, right? This is a problem throughout schools throughout our country, hatching up. I think that when we think about what students are choosing to stay at home, we have to think about what those reasons might be. And we can't always know, we can't always assume that it's because of privilege, right? Many, many families teach their, their own children, not a great sacrifice, right? Someone staying home and teaching their child themselves. I have respect for any teacher, including a parent who takes on responsibility to teach their own child.
I just want to bring up a few facts. I mean, there's a lot of reasons, people have reasons for things. So first, in the, in the policy, I think the last statement where we talked about, the first statement of the participation in extracurricular activities, you correctly state that they are not entitled to participate in just collective sports, okay, so that's, that's known. Where you talk about district permits homeschool students to participate in any intramural sports. The fact, Commissionals Regulation on Intramural Sports states that only pupils enrolled in district may participate in intramural sports. It's, it's for, you know, those that are enrolled in the district. So that's pretty clear that for intramural sports, it has to only be enrolled students. And it says they may, may be involved in club activities. So really, the only thing we should be discussing here is whether the homeschool students could be allowed to join in, in club activities. And I think we, you know, my, my opinion, I think kind of what Kristen said, is we have been working very hard in order to make the best learning experience for our enrolled students. And we believe that the district is, is a, is a great place for children to learn and grow. It may not be perfect, there's pluses and minuses. You know, clubs, extracurricular activities, sports are certainly a plus. It helps some people make a decision to have the kids, you know, be in the district. And we want, we want all the kids in the district. It helps financially because it, it adds to our numbers that feeds into the state calculation for the money we get. So the more kids we can have come back into the district, the more money we get. And also it adds to the overall experience for all the kids, because we want all these different personalities and backgrounds and cultures to come together, because that's what we are, so, so that's what I wanted to say.
I have five minutes up, just so everybody knows. Go ahead.
So, so the table of thirty-something schools was because that was, was available in the board policy online, not on the, this, the database that we use. And then I cross-checked that with, with the actual school policy itself to make sure I got the right reference. So, I mean, if we wanted to expand that into more research, we could. You know, I, I don't, I don't misbelieve what Kristen has presented, but I would like to see the data that supports what she used in her statements. And, you know, I don't think there'd be enough time until maybe the second meeting to actually do that. You know, I, I also know that one of the parents shared their story with me as to why they homeschool their child, and it's partly based on trauma. And, and, you know, in this, in this age, and that's why everybody's trying to get out and vote tomorrow, you know, are we going to treat each other as human beings, are we going to treat each other as, as specific to a certain category, a certain national identity, or even in this case, enrolled students versus non- enrolled students? You know, I, I don't, I, I, I have to at some point accept what comes, what the, what comes with making a decision, both the good and the bad. And if the overarching decision is to open the doors, then I think we should. We don't have a lot of data on what would actually happen if we opened the doors here in this community. I don't necessarily think we're a, the same community as one in Orange County. And I believe there's only twenty to forty kids, I believe, versus the two thousand eight hundred kids that we have. We're not going to know unless we try. And I think that's all we're asking for, is to try, so that we can collect the information, collect data. And if, and if we have to reverse our decision, we're a board, we can reverse our decision. But we're not going to know, and we're going to, this, we're going to discriminate the children that may benefit from it together with the children that we think that maybe shouldn't have it? So that's how I look at this problem.
Well, I think.
I'm pulled to vote.
I feel like we, we do know already that we're not giving, I guess I'm shut down.
No, you got it out. From my calculation, you got about two minutes, so go ahead.
We, we already know that we have students, enrolled students, who are not being, are not able to access some of our offerings. There are clubs that are full, there are, you know, there are other barriers that we have yet to define well. And I think that until we do that, we, we shouldn't open up another possibility for enrolled students to miss opportunities. I think that that should be our priority. James, you said, I think, very well, actually, you can divide this between a logistical problem and a philosophical problem. Philosophically, I'm all for it. Of course, I'm for inclusion. I think we would want, you know, ideally, everyone to be welcomed into these things. Logistically, I don't think we're there. I don't think we have it. And I think, and, and the other, the other question is, and legal advice said, they don't necessarily see a difference between homeschool children and private school children. Now, that is a huge population that has already made requests to participate in the Calqueval and other programs that are getting a lot of good attention from, because there are great things happening in our district. So at that point, what, what do we do? If there is no difference legally, and this is, this is a difference, you know, this is named in our policy, I think we open ourselves up to a huge vulnerability.
So we build a legal.
And that's, that's time, based on.
Motion to table the first reading? I, I, I mean, we didn't get to, Mike, you made some.
Hold on, time, time's up about the discussion piece. So Mike is asking, you can make a motion to table, however, you could vote on it as well. So if you, if someone want to make a motion to table, they can make a motion to table.
I'll draw my motion to table.
All those in favor?
Oh, boy.
Of approving it? So we had the discussion, it was twenty minutes, and now it's approved, the first read of ten, uh, eleven point one.
To consider, I mean, Mike made some, some recommendations and.
James, James, the time.
Include those.
The, the discussion was twenty minutes, and that was what the board agreed upon. There was a motion to extend it, and the board did not agree to extend it.
I make a motion that we eliminate the limit.
That was motion, right?
It's a different motion.
Huh?
It's a technically different motion.
How is it different?
Because it's not an extension, it's elimination.
He asked to have no limit, so it's the same thing.
He asked for an extension.
He asked to have no limit under discussion.
Well, then, if he, that's his motion and he asked for an extension.
So An, is there a second to Anthony's motion to extend the discussion?
Yes.
Comments or questions? James made the second. All those in favor of extending it?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, has to.
Nay.
So there was two to six. Motion was denied. Okay, so now we're voting on eleven point one oh, which is the first read for the homeschool policy. Motion for. Motion to approve.
Second.
We had the first and the second. Anthony made the motion, Kristen seconded, and we had the discussion, so now it's all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Can we do a roll call, please?
He said aye. Did you say aye?
I said nay.
Well, he said, he was trying to.
I was saying all those in favor, and then I said all those opposed. So I'm going to do a roll call and clear it up.
Ms. Betterbit?
Nay.
Mr. Caslayal?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Nay.
Mr. Rakowski?
Nay.
Mr. Singh?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Hewer, opposed? Mr. White?
Nay. So we have three yeses and two nays, so the first read of the motion is denied.
How many nays?
I'm sorry, three yeses and four nays. No, I'm sorry, five nays. We had one, two, three, four, five, five nays?
Five no.
Five no is three yeses, so it was three to five. Okay. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of voting in board retreat. The board retreat is not open to the public, and no public meeting will be held. The board is not expected to take action after executive session.
I'd like a motion we table that, because of the interest of time, it's already ten forty-three. Second motion.
What we do is not, no, is up to the table.
There's no discussion on table.
So Anthony made a motion to, are you making a motion not to have executive session?
Yeah, the motion to table the second executive session. Or not have it, whatever, how we want to word it.
Time the agenda.
That's my intent.
I don't want to misrepresent your words, so I, I want to.
Motion that we don't have a second executive session based on the time.
Motion not. And there was a second, Craig, you seconded it? Comments or questions?
So, so the motion is to not have, does not have an executive session, right?
Correct.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can we have this discussion at another, a later date?
We can. I was just trying to meet members' needs based on what we were seeing in emails and to give clarity to our people that may have needed it, so, I mean, that's. You tired? And, I'm shocked Anthony made it, I heard him comment earlier that he's ready to go to twelve o'clock. So I, I think he's a little bitter because things in it goes away, but that's fine.
I think it's important to clarity amongst us about especially communication, so.
Can we, I just personally.
Go into that agenda?
If I can make a comment, I personally need time to decompress.
So the motion is to not have the second exec. Did I answer your question?
I just hope there's an opportunity, another time for the, what you, what the discussion was going to be was, based on my question, so.
If it doesn't happen tonight, if it doesn't happen tonight, I will try to make it happen another time.
Another, that's all I'm asking. Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of not having the second exec?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
When you vote in the negative, you don't say aye, you say.
Oh, nay.
Nay. So.
I'm making a noise at the appropriate time.
So to not have the second exec, Kelly, can you do a roll call again?
Ms. Betterbit?
Yes. Meaning.
Not to have.
Not to have it.
Mr. Caslayal?
No.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Rakowski?
Not to have.
No, to have it.
So it's.
No.
No.
And James, did you, was yours accurate? Yours was no, you want to have.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mr. Rakowski?
I want to have the executive session.
So that's a no. No, no, not to not have it.
Mr. Singh?
No, I would like not to have it, I can take it down a couple notches.
So that's a yes for Anthony.
It's a yes.
That's a yes, he does not, the motion is to not have the second, to have the executive session.
Well, I heard him say it was no.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Yes.
Kelly, I'm sorry, yes.
Ms. Hewer?
Uh, no.
Mr. White?
No.
It's a dead tie. Doesn't matter.
I have that it was three to, three to five?
Five no, three yes.
So the motion was denied, so the motion on the table is to have exec. So is there a motion?
Motion to have a, a second executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
That's seven to one. Thank you.